Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order, the meeting of January 14th, Thousand Oaks City Council. Mayor Fox is not able to be with us, at least for now. He's the incident commander on a small fire on PCH. Let's hope it stays small. Can I ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you give us the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Irwin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Adam.
Here.
And Mayor Fox is absent at this time.
Thank you very much. You know, we're going to move an item on the agenda up in deference to time to our presenters. So could we have Rosemary Locata and Debbie Chang come forward to... Oh, I beg your pardon, ladies, I'm sorry. We're going to hear it after the consent calendar. Beg your pardon. But we are going to move you up a little bit so you're not going to be here all night. Thank you. Well, in that case, then, I'm going to come down to the podium and we're going to do a special presentation. Well, hello again, everyone. I'm very happy tonight to have some representatives from La Srobe's Hospital here, our premier medical provider here in Thousand Oaks. And they are going to... They have received three highly distinguished, top-quality awards. So if I could call down the interim president and CEO Natalie Mucy, the chief financial officer Debbie Herwalt, the chief nursing officer Cindy Johnson. Hi there. Hannah Grossman, the chief medical officer, and Aaron Vera, vice president of quality management. Come on down, ladies. All right. There we are. Thank you very much. Naturally, we're very proud to have La Srobe's Hospital as part of the Thousand Oaks family, and you've been a great member of that family. And you have received three awards, not one, but three. And I'll tell the public what those awards are. First was the Leapfrog A-Grade for Patient Safety. And this award rates how well hospitals protect patients from accidents, from errors, from injuries, and infections. And this shows La Srobe's commitment to improving quality and patient safety. That's important. Also, you were named Top Performer on the Key Quality Measures by the Joint Commission, which is the leading accreditor of health care organizations in America, recognized for exemplary performance using evidence-based clinical process. And these types of conditions include heart attack, heart failure, pneumonia, and surgical care. All right? Got that right? And received the Number One Consumer Choice Award from the National Research Corporation. So these awards are quite an accomplishment. I want to congratulate you very much for having such a high degree of care at La Srobe's Hospital.[373.06][373.06](Applause) Natalie, would you like to say just a word or two?
A couple things would be great.
Sure.
On behalf of La Srobe's Hospital Medical Center, I just want to thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Adam and council members for this recognition. We're extremely proud of these accomplishments. We think it's a wonderful validation of La Srobe's commitment to quality and patient safety. So we're honored to be here to accept this on behalf of all of our staff and physicians who, without them, would not be possible. So thank you so much for the recognition.[402.62][402.62](Applause)
Thank you. Thank you. I have a little certificate as well. Let me take a... Get a little shot of that? Here we are. All right.
Do you want to stand in the middle?
Yeah. There we go. Why don't you hold us?
Okay.[415.62][415.62](Laughter)
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.[418.62][418.62](Applause) Ms. Lawrence, would you... And we're going to go to public comments now. Would you announce that, please, Ms. Lawrence?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Seven people have presented cards. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. First, we have Ted Smith, our fire chief, followed by Billy Martin and Carrie Sadler. Ted?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council, city manager. I'm here to discuss a unique situation that Southern California and really the Western United States is in. Currently, we're besieged by a high-pressure system that has not weakened over the last almost two years and for the currently last three months. Weather patterns in facing the western hemisphere and the western United States into a drought condition. Currently today, we're in single-digit RHs. The weather as of 6:00 PM... Excuse me, at 5:00 PM this evening was... The weather was nineteen... The wind was out of the northeast, 19 miles an hour, RH of 6% and wind gusts of 35 miles an hour. So I stand before you tonight to tell you that we are in extreme fire danger and heightened awareness needs to be projected and to be practiced by the citizens of Thousand Oaks and the state of California. The current fuel moisture, which is a measurement of the dry and dead fuel in the Santa Monica Mountains, is currently at 53%. At this time of year, we've usually received up to three inches of rain in January. Currently, we have last rainfall that was in Southern California that was measurable was December 7th, and it was a trace amount less than a quarter inch. In some areas, much less than others. With that fuel moisture being at 53%, it should be trending up into the 80% percentile. It currently is at a critical level. During its worst, during the summer months around October, September and October, it was at 47%. If it gets to 30%, it dies and it doesn't recover. So what does this mean? It means that the fuel is very receptive to fire and will carry fire readily. The potential for large fire growth is still in the grips of Southern California. I don't know if you've been outside in the last few days, but it's very dry, windy conditions that is conducive to large fire growth, large fire spread. Winds of 30 miles an hour can carry fire embers and ember showers up to one mile. With this, I would just like to heighten awareness to the council, to the citizens of Thousand Oaks, and to the residents of Southern California, to remind everybody to be careful. If you see anything that looks unusual, it doesn't look right, it seems out of place, call your local law enforcement, call 911. If it's out of place, you see something, say something. I would just like to encourage residents to be mindful and be very careful of the conditions that we're in and that we have a long... And really, the weather pattern does not seem to be changing here for the next few... At least for the next projected 10 days. Hopefully, we'll get some rain. I'm open to any council questions, if there's any. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Next, Billy Martin, followed by Carrie Sadler and Al DeLore.
Hello. My name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. Happy 50th anniversary, everyone. I'm proud to have helped in the production of the 2014 Thousand Oaks 50th Anniversary Calendar. Everyone I have given one to has been most appreciative. I've been trying to stay abreast of other ways we can mark this milestone. And what do you know? I have an idea. I think that we need a permanent marker for our 50th anniversary. And what better way than to utilize a marker that has been standing in salute since before George Washington was inaugurated? I am speaking of our namesake, the oak tree, specifically, the signature oak tree, the model for the city's logo, as it stands on the Civic Arts Plaza property, proximate to the Jungleland Monument and shadowing the Three Eagles statue honoring the national bird. The oak is our national tree, growing in every state of the Union. But to the best of my knowledge, there are few monuments to the oak tree, most notably the Charter Oak Monument in Connecticut. It is not too late to make this happen by October. And as the tree is the main focus and is already standing, costs should be minimal and might even be raised by donors. I picture benches surrounding the tree, perhaps even made of oak, that could be dedicated to individuals in memorial. As many of you are likely unaware, the Adopt an Oak program was also my idea. I gave it to Dan Del Campo in 1996 under a majestic oak in Old Meadows Park. We might even consider planting a new oak sapling nearby to mark the next 50. And yes, I would be willing to spearhead this effort for the city as well. To quote David Icke, "Today's mighty oak is just yesterday's nut that held its ground." Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Next is Carrie Sadler, followed by Al DeLore and Jim Wolfe.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, and city manager. My name is Carrie Sadler. I'm the communications manager for New West Symphony, and I'm here just to tell you about what we have coming up for our next concert on our program, as well as a little bit about the rest of the season, and to thank you for your ongoing support of the symphony. We are the resident professional orchestra of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza and currently celebrating our 19th season and about to enter our celebratory 20th anniversary, which we are very, very excited about. Coming up on our program next weekend, January 24th, 25th, and 26th, is our program called Bolero. And it will feature Revell's Bolero, which is very popular, very well-known, as well as the Sorcerer's Apprentice, which I'm sure all of you remember from Fantasia fame. And also, well, Boris Broadd, our founding music director, and conductor Laureate will be the conductor on this program, guest conducting. And concert master Danielle Belen will be our featured guest artist. We also have coming up in... For the rest of the season, we have Beethoven Fifth to end the season. We also have the Verdi Requiem, and we have pictures at an exhibition at our February programs. So it's a wonderful season left. We're one-third of the way through, and we just hope that we can ask for everybody to attend and come enjoy the concerts. It's a wonderful professional orchestra, as I said, and we hope to gain your support, not only in attendance, but also just knowing about our wonderful education programs such as Harmony Project for underserved children in Ventura County, and our Music Van, which goes around to a lot of the area schools, and our Symphonic Adventures program that serves over 8,000 children throughout Ventura and LA counties. So thank you so much for your ongoing support and hope to see you all at the symphony. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next is Al DeLore, followed by Jim Wolfe and Ed Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Al Adams, and city council members. My name is Al DeLore. I live in Oxnard, but I have a problem with you people. You're the poster child for speed humps. And in 2008, the city council wondered and asked their staff what would be the consequences of putting speed humps on Upper Ranch Road. Well, there's 10 of them, and it'll delay the emergency response vehicles. Your staff did not know what the consequences would be. I've given you a handout here. First, Institute of Transportation engineers who literally wrote the book on speed humps. They don't claim that speed humps save lives. There isn't a single reputable, peer-reviewed study that says that speed humps save lives. I've asked your staff, they don't know, and I've searched for two years. So the only thing we have to worry about now is how many were they killed? There were 1,800 people who have their speed humps... Who the speed humps have delayed their emergency response. Now, one-seventh of these people will die of sudden cardiac arrest. That means within five minutes, 80% of those people will die. So if you just delay them for one minute or two minutes, you've done a lot of damage. A five-minute delay will kill 80% of those people. Now, I've given you a chart, so you can decide how many people you want to kill by putting in speed humps. I think that your traffic engineer should show that the speed humps save lives and how many people will kill. If you don't do that, then you shouldn't vote on putting in speed humps because, like I say, 1,800 people, and I can prove this, have their response delayed by one minute by those speed humps on Upper Ranch Road. I did this because the traffic engineer is going to bring forward another... Suppose we put in speed humps. I'll fight that also. Okay, thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. DeLore. Jim Wolfe, followed by Ed Jones and Ray Garcia.
My name is Jim Wolfe. I'm a Thousand Oaks resident, mayor pro tem, council, and staff. Prior to the enactment of 1559, I presented the city with a mathematical model proving just how bad the Ranch Mobile Home Park residents were going to get hosed by this ordinance. So today, I want to demonstrate that graphically. This represents a picture of a lot at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. This is a lot at Thunderbird Oaks, our sister park, not too far away. And then we have one more shot, third, our third lot. This one's also at Ranch Mobile Home Park. For perspective, this driveway is 10 feet wide. So this blank represents the lot that you saw in the picture number two, which is at Thunderbird Oaks. This green card represents minimum space allowed by California state law for a mobile home park space. This represents totally proportional, the lot at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. Take this out, we see that this original blank, this cost $500 that the owner gets in return for this space at Thunderbird Oaks. Here, he gets $350 from the space at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. And the city attorneys like to tell the media just how great a deal this is because it's the lowest-cost rent in the city, right? Well, maybe not. There is... We can put another lot on here and make it 700, and even a third lot, and we're up to $1,050 for less space than owners getting in return over at the Thunderbird Oaks. Now, anybody can invert this if they would like. And if they did do an inversion of this process, it'd find out the real, just and reasonable rent for the Ranch Mobile Home Park, and this is it. The same as it was before, which proves our point that the Ranch Mobile Home Park was, is, and always has been competitive return for the park owner. So some people call this a rip-off. I call it elder abuse. And I think that we would like to extend our offer again to the city to sit down and talk with us. This door is running closed very quickly, so we would be interested in hearing your response for sure. Now, keep in mind also that at the Ranch Mobile Home Park, there are zero amenities. There's no swimming pool, there's no rec room, there's no walking path, there's not even a lousy shuffleboard court. And despite the fact that there are so many people that are handicapped, there are no handicap facilities, not even a handicap parking space. So until two weeks from now, when we'll bring you some more information that will be up for today, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Jim.[1263.12][1263.12](Applause) Ed Jones, followed by Ray Garcia and Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the council. I have the... Some of the usual suspects here. We're here to honor former Mayor Claudia de la Peña. And we have tonight, former Mayor Dick Hous, who is the senior member, I don't know in age, but in years served, from 1966 to 1970. We have Raymond Garcia, who was from 1968 to 1972. I served from 1970 to 1974. Larry Horner, served from 1974 to 1990. And Bob Lewis, from 1988 to 1992. I've asked each one if they would very briefly give their main highlight from their tenure on the council as mayor.
Good evening. This is all very impromptu, so please forgive me. It is an honor to be here this evening among all of you, and especially under our most recent mayor, Claudia. She did a fine job for the city, and we all should congratulate her greatly. As far as my tour was concerned, it was the early years of the city. 66 to 70 was an exciting time. Everything was brand-new. We were truly creating the initial guidelines and record for the city. And proposals came right and left, and we were there till all hours of the night, till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning every week for a long time. It was a busy time, but I think the groundwork was laid reasonably well, and I'm very happy with the way the city has evolved, and thank all of you for your service.
Next, we have Ray Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, councilman, Mayor Pro Tem, Al Adams. And the highlights I remember was, first of all, we had a public discussion at the very end of the meeting. So sometimes the people had to say until midnight, maybe 1:00, you know, to say they're safe. So we came up with an idea, why don't we have them first? So that's why we're talking now, so that we can go home and enjoy the rest of the day while you work. Another thing that we had was, we sat in the Water District, and we voted on the Water District to take that property that was on Hampshire Road, where the Chase Bank is, I think. Anyway, we voted to have that commercial because we owned that property and we wanted to sell that property to get some money. So then Tuesday night came before the city council, and the same five people, city council voted against the project.[1444.75][1444.75](Laughter) So that was kind of an unusual thing. And another thing was, we did have Halloween on Saturday and Sunday one year. And I remember, we did have a good time, though, and we enjoyed everything. We worked together, just as the council is to now, today. Thank you.
Ted, I was on the council.[1468.25][1468.25](Applause) I was on the council then, and Ray thought having Halloween on Sunday was sacrilegious, so he told him to come on Saturday, so the kids went both nights. Then next, we have Larry Horner, who served from 74 to 90.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. I'm Larry Horner from Thousand Oaks. Ed asked each of us to give one or two things that highlighted our careers. I have to do it in a dual manner. The first one is that when I was a freshman on the city council, the Oaks Mall came before the city for a vote. And at that time, there was a lot of opposition to it because it was just something that was much too big in the eyes of a lot of people in the community to bring forth. Being a freshman on the council, I was trying my best to make all the best decisions I could make and the trade-offs and the like. And at that time, I began to realize what the age-old expression goes, sometimes it's better to be a chicken in a fox coop than a fox in a chicken coop. And I didn't know which one I was at the time, but anyhow, we got through it. We had five, over 500 people that were down at that public hearing, and the meeting went from 6:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning. And that was the beginning of my career, and certainly as a neophyte. When I left that meeting at night, I was no longer a neophyte. The second, of course, was 1976, the bicentennial year, when everything was light and lovely and everybody was excited about doing everything they possibly could to make a community, an outstanding community. There was a lot of fun activities and the like, and it was just a lot of good, solid feeling in the community. And that was my first term as mayor, and I have enjoyed that. And hopefully, this year, with going into the 50th anniversary of the city, that you all will make us an enjoyable year, and we wish you the very best. Claudia, thank you for your past years of service. And we have a mug here that Mr. Jones has decided that each of you would get when your term expired as a council member. So if you come down, I'd like to present that to you on behalf of the group here, if that's okay.
Bob Lewis, she knows that. Okay. And we'll have Bob Lewis, and then we'll have the presentation. Bob Lewis, served from 88 to 92.
All right, fine. First, Mayor Pro Tem and council members, thank all of you for your service. But Claudia, I'd like to specifically thank you. I think your last year as mayor, this past year when you were mayor, was an outstanding year, and it was really good to see, and thank you. I think that there were a number of things that happened in the time I was on the council, but the biggest one was when I first was on the council with Larry Horner, we had took the vote to move forward on the Civic Arts Plaza. And that was a final decision where we funded it and we moved forward. For those who weren't here, to say it was highly controversial is being extremely polite. I mean, I remember when we made the decision to add another 100 seats to this room, and we were waiting for the eggs to come, but we knew it was the right thing to do. And then when Judy Lazar joined the council a few years later, she and I served on the architectural committee for this building. all will make us an enjoyable year, and we wish you the very best. Claudia, thank you for your past years of service, and we have a mug here that Mr. Jones has decided that each of you would get when your term expired as a council member. So, if you come down, I'd like to present that to you on behalf of the group here, if that's okay.
Okay, and we'll have Bob Lewis, and then we'll have the presentation. Bob Lewis, served from 88 to 92.
All right, fine. First, Mayor Protam and council members, thank all of you for your service. But Claudia, I'd like to specifically thank you. I think your last year as mayor, this past year when you were mayor, was an outstanding year, and it was really good to see, and thank you. I think that there were a number of things that happened in the time I was on the council, but the biggest one was when I first was on the council with Larry Horner, we had took the vote to move forward on the Civic Arts Plaza. And that was a final decision, where we funded it and we moved forward. For those who weren't here, that, to say it was highly controversial is being extremely polite. I mean, I remember when we made the decision to add another 100 seats to this room, and we were waiting for the eggs to come, but we knew it was the right thing to do. And then when Judy Lazar joined the council a few years later, she and I served on the Architectural Committee for this building. And if any of you have ever dealt with an architect, you know that is an interesting process to be, you know, there were a lot of battles, height, variety of them. But Judy and I talked, and we came up with two things that a lot of people may not know. One, she and I agreed that we were going to require and demand that the ladies' rooms be three times city code. And the purpose of that was to avoid, in the main auditorium, the purpose of that was to avoid the lines that occur when we've seen in every theater. The second thing we demanded, and had a lot of interesting discussions with the architect, was to deal with people like me, who kind of have a little bit of height, particularly in their legs, was that to be able for the patrons to sit in the Civic Arts Plaza without having their knees up through their chest. And that took a lot of argument, but again, we got that accomplished. And I, just finishing with this building, I was mayor when we broke ground here. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a, I just have a very brief wrap-up, and then I'd like Larry to give Claudia the mug. You're gonna be mugged here, Claudia. And I'd just like to say that all of us consider Thousand Oaks our baby. My wife thought "baby" was a little too familiar a word, but I'm gonna use it anyway, and therefore we have a special interest in its continued success. We don't believe we did anything superior to anyone else. We all did different things depending on the needs of the time. Each one of us did his part. For instance, Dick Hous, Chuck Cohen, Ray Garcia, and I served on the General Plan Committee, which drafted the master plan for the city of Thousand Oaks. Later, Chuck, I, and Ray were on the council, which held hearings and adopted the plan. In short, each person here at the mic has accomplishments unique to his time on the council, as do each of you here on the dais, and we appreciate your work very much, and especially want to salute Claudia for her year as mayor in 2013.
Thank you all very much for coming down. You mentioned in December, on my last day, that you would be back, and yes, past mayors have been mugged by you, and so we appreciate the mugging that we get from you, in particular, the historical perspective that you bring, because it reminds us how precious Thousand Oaks is, and the current council is, oh, there you go, Mr. Chuck Cohen, another former mayor. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I was just talking about how we like being mugged by you guys, and the historical perspective that you bring, and we will use the foundation that you all laid for the city of Thousand Oaks's next 50 years. So, the council is very excited to embark on the new journey, the future, and you really made the path, you already laid the path, and it's going to be easier for us, hopefully, to plan the next 50 years. But everybody here in the city appreciates all of your hard work, so thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Price would like to make a comment?
Yeah, I just, I would like to say that generally, I object to the use of the word "mug," or actually, the action. But gentlemen, I don't think I've ever had the pleasure of being in the company of that many former council members and mayors, and I want to personally thank you for all the hard work that you put into making this city the outstanding city that it is. And I moved here in 1990, and I was just looking at when your terms were, and there was so much work that was done prior to me getting here, and I just wanted to say thank you, from me and from my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful, Nick Kidway, director of concern, citizens of Thousand Oaks since 93, and resident since 79, when these gentlemen were doing all the wonderful work. Unfortunately, I have to break the bubble. I mean, it's difficult, but somebody's got to do it. Things ain't that great in this city. They are, because we have wonderful residents, but it's not because of the government. We now, thanks to the back-room dealings, have a 5-0 council. So that is wonderful. There is no divisiveness, there is no debate, there's no need. And all, you know, some people think money is the evil thing. Money is not everything. Some people will sell their soul just for a title of Mayor Protam. Mayor. In fact, instead of addressing the citizens of this community, the state of the city is held at the chamber with a $55 fundraiser fee. And this same year, a great thing happened, in that it was televised live, and it's on YouTube. It's one hour, but it's free, so it's not advertised, because on the other hand, how many people would be foolish enough like me to spend an hour watching the former mayor give the state of the city? But it's available on YouTube. All you have to do is just Google it on YouTube, Claudia Vill de la Peña, and you will see Well, the city now is finally, again, going after people with feather signs. These are the little signs on the sidewalk, next to the sidewalk. Who are the, generally, the people who have these? Mom and pop businesses. In fact, I just saw that AutoZone is coming on the boulevard, because mom and pop businesses cannot make it. That's the reality in the United States and in Thousand Oaks now. But the big enchilada, which is Hooters, has a big sign on the windows that spells out H-O-O-T-E-R-S on seven windows, that's seen from all the, on the parking lot. The staff and no council member is willing to take any action against that. It may be legal, but it ain't right. I mean, it's sign clutter. It doesn't belong in Thousand Oaks, and no one, it's a 5-0 council, so forget trying to do anything like that. In fact, none of the council took the matter up before themselves. In fact, the mayor emeritus, and the city manager emeritus wrote, Mr. Brimhall, that the council should make the decision. Mr. Larry Horner had written about it, too, but they never took it to the court. They wanted $1,500, which people didn't have. And so we have filed an appeal, and we still have 10 days to go to court if we want to, but I don't want to go to court. It's free, there's no charge, but I don't want to spend the money or the time unless there's an outright cry from the citizens. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And now I'll ask our city manager if he has any follow-up to public comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the council. We heard some comments and suggestions about the 50th anniversary of the oak trees, that type of thing. We'll follow up with that resident as a reminder for the city council, members of the public. On February 11th, the city council will be holding its regular council meeting over at Cal Lutheran University, and the topic will be, one of the themes for that evening will be the 50th anniversary year coming up, and there are opportunities for residents to be involved. So, Drew, we'll make sure we follow up with that speaker. Some good suggestions there. Then we also heard a speaker talk about speedhumps on Upper Ranch Road, and we will follow up with that individual. He did have some comments about an upcoming speedhump request, so we want to make sure we follow up with him and that his concerns are addressed. Mayor Protam, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming down to speaking to us this evening. We'll move on to our consent calendar now, and I'll ask my fellow council members if they have any items they would like to have pulled. All right, no items? I do believe we have a speaker card, and that would be Mr. Nick Kidway.
Well, Mayor Protam, you don't need any training. You already know the name and the hoopla, so congratulations. Maybe you will turn out to be a good mayor, unlike some of the others. Nick Kidway, isn't it, on Navy Way Park? Funny, I'm not supposed to make jokes. I'm a very serious man, a grouch, actually. Some people said we don't like to see grouches at the city council. Well, I too would be happy if I was getting $70,000 plus $1,600 for travel expenses. That's for lobbyists. And that's only for the federal lobbyists. That's on the consent calendar. And these things don't belong in a report. They just belong in a consent calendar, which by definition is supposed to be routine, not debatable, just quick, "I vote." When are you folks ever going to deliberate on spending the taxpayers' money with deliberation? And that's just for the $70,000. I thought this was, I knew about the state lobbyists that you have, so that's what I had thought. Then I realized this is federal, the state should spend something like $50,000, $60,000 there, and then, I don't know about other cities, and I love the young lady, but we have a full-time staff member who's a lobbyist, who works on lobby. And people will say that, Nick, you are naive. Well, I came in this beautiful country in Southern California in 1971, and I and my friends, we all thought this was heaven on earth. And the middle class has been completely decimated in this country for the last, since 1979. It's fact, and this is why. We have, in fact, you folks go and visit our congress lady, you visit the assembly people, they are supposed to represent us. Why do you need to have lobbyists? Well, if you didn't have the lobbyists, we would not have the 23 exchange. I mean, some people have to take the leadership thing, like Al Adams has just done, I mean, by being, not requiring time to learn people's names, to pronounce them, or that there is a card on consent calendar. Take the leadership role on the important things and make the change that we do not need to spend these money. We need a slim government, especially because there ain't money. I mean, even though California has come back, we don't have money to spend on these things. And in the remaining seconds, I mean, I've been talking about this, maybe somebody will report this to the grand jury, I don't know, other cities follow this thing or not, is that the treasurer should not be the city finance director. I have asked, and you folks are selective, you don't answer my question, who, Mr. Adams has the responsibility to write on the front of the check? He has the responsibility to deposit the money? He has the responsibility to invest the money? He has the responsibility to make decisions, how much should be invested? When you give too much money to one person, like my friend Kim, you know, in North Korea, bad things will happen. And that's why you should really divide that responsibility between two or three people, unless, I think, maybe the checks, there are other people who sign them. But even then, these two offices do not belong together. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, may I get a motion to pass a consent calendar, please? Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Vote, please.
Motion carries with Councilmember Fox absent.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we will go to our Thousand Oaks Sister City Committee, which is an exciting prospect that we have in front of us. May I have Debbie Chang, one of the co-presidents of the committee, and Cavalliere Rosemary Licata, come to the podium and give us a little update, please?
Thank you. Mayor Protam, Al Adams, and the city council members and city manager, and I had down Andy Fox, but I understand he's not here. We congratulate Andy Fox for being elected mayor, as well as Al Adams for being elected Mayor Protam, and we wish you success in the coming year. It is an honor for us to address the Thousand Oaks City Council once again, to give you a progress report of our sister-city committee meetings. As co-president of the steering committee, Debbie Chang and myself, Rosemary Licata, we share, we will share some of the plans when the Chinese delegation arrive this February Being this is a community-involvement-driven sister-city relationship between Thousand Oaks and the Shibi district in China, we are fortunate to have assembled a large influential group of committee leaders to assist in the planning of our celebration, as well as representatives of large corporations such as Baxter, Amgen, and so on. We have had three reception meetings, which have been, which were hosted by various committee members, which have been very successful. All committee members receive the minutes via email to be informed of all the details. We were interviewed by the Thousand Oaks Acorn. You may have seen the article, and the article of December 12th, 2013, was excellent, stating sister-city Chinese delegation to visit Thousand Oaks in February. The group will make the first visit to the Cano Valley. Because of that great article, people contacted us and wished to be involved and keep and help in any way they can. And one person who contacted me worked very closely with Chinese people and has experience working with them, and he is present with us today. That's how, how he thought this was so important, he came to the city council meeting this And now I wish to introduce co-president Debbie Chang, who has closely worked with Tony Lee, who is a liaison between the Chinese delegation, and she will bring you up to date as to who the delegates are and so on. Debbie Chang.
Thank you. Good evening. Although we don't have confirmation on the dates they will arrive, the tentative date we reserve is February 11th, and we received names and the titles of four delegation members. They are the mayor of Shibi district, Qingdao, and the bureau chief of tourism, the bureau chief of economic development, and also the deputy chief of commerce. And so, after that, we received information, there will probably be four more members of the delegation, and we would like to thank you for your support, and we are looking forward to their visit.
Thank you, Debbie. As soon as we get the actual date, when they will be here, we will share it with everyone. Our next reception meeting for the entire committee will be on Thursday, January 23rd, at the Founder's Room of the Civic Arts Plaza. And we are asking for sponsorships so we are able to host the delegation when they arrive. We've had great success, but we are still working on that particular project. And we thank the Thousand Oaks City Council for offering to take care of the rental of the Founder's Room when we have the reception committee, so we thank them for that. And that'll be from 5:30 to 7:30, and some of our committee members will host the food and the drinks. And many, many people have, on the committee, have been so generous in the past. Now, at this meeting, we will try to finalize the plans, one of which is a luncheon at the Sherwood Country Club, where the two mayors will be signing the important documents, so that'll be a very wonderful celebration. And then, we will also finalize what the delegation wishes to see when they arrive in Thousand Oaks. in Thousand Oaks. They did mention that they were interested in health care, so we can plan that. And this could be handled very well, because with the experience of our fine committee, that will be very well done. Also, trade and commerce was their interest. So this is a community committee team effort. And the public will be invited to the luncheon and some of the events. We thank you very kindly for allowing us to speak before you regarding the special project for the, for the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, well, I thank you very much for spearheading this initiative. It's quite a lot of work, and I'm looking forward to a very dynamic relationship between the city of Thousand Oaks and Shibi district. It's going to be great. And, I mean, after all, two biggest economies in the world, and you two are bridging the gap. So, thank you so much.
It's our great pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we're going to have a public hearing, and that's Public Hearing Eight A, the Miller Ranch Project. Madam City Clerk, if you would announce that, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item Eight A, Miller Ranch Project. It's a zone change two thousand ten dash seven oh one eight five, tentative track map, two thousand ten dash seven oh one eight seven, residential plan development, two thousand ten dash seven oh one seven nine, oak tree permit, two thousand ten dash seven oh one eight one, landmark tree permit, two thousand twelve dash seven zero zero seven eight. Applicant is KSK Investments, located the east side of Upper Ranch Road, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Canaan Road. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and all documents for the city council should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five people has presented cards in pursuit to council standards, the applicant, which I understand there's two people that will be sharing fifteen minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the remaining speakers will have five minutes each.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And our staff report will be given by senior planner Pam Leopold.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Adam, members of the council, for this evening's consideration of the Miller Ranch Project. The applicant is KSK Investments, and the location is two thousand Upper Ranch Road. The project comprises approximately twenty-seven point two-nine acres of county unincorporated land. It's located on the east side of Upper Ranch Road, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Canaan. And this is the last large parcel in the North Ranch without an approved subdivision. There are five entitlements associated with this project. The first one is the pre-zoning, comprises the zone change to RPD residential plan development, zero point five units per net acre, single-family dwelling, a tentative track map to divide the property into thirteen residential lots, one landscaped green belt lot and one open space lot, an RPD residential plan development to allow the construction of thirteen homes. There's also an oak tree permit to remove six oak trees and encroach upon five oak trees, a landmark tree permit to prune one landmark tree and encroach on two trees, and also certification of the environmental impact report number three thirty. This is an aerial view of the Miller Ranch. There is nine lots on Upper Ranch Road to the west. There is an existing ranch house and some other accessory buildings. There's a fire station to the south and also a single-family home. On the east side, there is an approved subdivision of approximately five lots on thirteen point three-two acres, which is not constructed at this time. And to the north is Edison Eastman with transmission towers. These are some of the photos of the Miller Ranch. You can see the ranch house, existing ranch house in the center of the photo. This is looking southeast from the Miller Ranch towards Canaan Road and towards the tract five seven oh seven, which is not, not constructed. This is looking southeast, or southwest, I'm sorry, with regard to the tract on Upper Ranch Road, tract four oh two three. And this is looking west, towards the Edison Eastman on the right-hand side of the photo, and towards tract four oh two three on Upper Ranch Road. The background, essentially, the council began the annexation on June twenty-second, two thousand and ten. It was initiated. Planning commission did review the project and recommended approval. City council first heard to sign him on November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. And subsequent to that, council did appoint Mayor Fox to serve as mediator to address concerns between parties and the developers of the project. On September twelfth, mediation was concluded, and currently, they're, the project is before you this evening. This is a revised design. Essentially, there were, there was a reduction from fourteen lots to thirteen lots. The, there is one access point on Canaan Road, which is at the southeast portion, and there is also full access on, from, from the access point on Canaan Road. There is an emergency access only on Upper Ranch Road. And they're currently proposed as a median, well, as a buffer, landscape buffer, of two hundred and fifty feet all along the west side, adjacent to the lots on Upper Ranch Road. There's also another landscape buffer proposed on the south side. This slide shows you the original site plan and the revised site plan, and as you can see, most of the development has shifted further to the east. The principal changes, again, were the reduction of the number of residential lots from fourteen to thirteen, the expanded landscape buffers, two hundred and fifty on the west and a hundred feet on the south, one primary access point on Canaan Road at the southeast corner, new median break on Canaan Road. There was a nineteen percent reduction in grading for the paths and the roads, and the rough grading is to be completed within sixty days. In order to minimize impacts to the tract four oh two three, five homes on the west and the south side are going to be completed at the same time and with eighteen months of the initial building permit, grading permit. Six oak tree removals instead of one. Five of those oak trees are associated with the median break on Canaan Road. The upper space, open space lot is still two point five acres. The Broughton's milk fetch is still preserved in place on the southeast portion of the project, and all the onsite oak and landmark trees are preserved in place. And as I mentioned, the grading is balanced at six thousand four hundred and eighty-three cubic yards. This is one of the oak trees that is scheduled for removal in order to accomplish the entry on Canaan Road. This is also one of the landmark trees, it's black walnut tree, proposed for encroachment. The environmental evaluation originally prepared was a mitigated negative declaration, number two eighty. Staff received concerns and worked with the developer to prepare an environmental impact report, three hundred and thirty, number three thirty. The EIR reviewed all the required topics. And essentially, there was a revised design that was mentioned with mitigation, has no significant environmental impacts. This new design is similar to the modified site design alternative in the EIR, which was the environmentally superior alternative. All mitigation measures are incorporated into the conditions. The density is consistent with the general plan and adjacent zoning. Revisions were addressing the concerns of the residents, and if the project is approved, the city will file annexation application with LAFCO. Recommendation is to certify the final EIR three thirty and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, introduce the ordinance to approve the pre-zoning, and adopt all the resolutions associated with the project. This concludes staff's report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. Questions from, Ms. Leopold? All right, no questions, then we will go to the speakers. And first, we have, representing the applicant, two speakers, correct? Leonard Liston and Mark Kestenbaum.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff, neighbors, friends, thank you all for this evening. My name is Leonard Liston, I'm the president of LC Engineering Group, located here in Thousand Oaks for the last thirty-four years, providing engineering services across the Cano Valley. I'm here representing KSK Investments, the owners of Miller Ranch, who Ron Senchuk and Mark Kestenbaum, who are both here tonight, and Mark's going to share a few minutes with me tonight to speak as well. Also, in attendance here are the team consultants, which include Mark Sellers, our land use attorney, who is here to answer any questions, Joe Gibson of Meridian Consultants, the environmental consulting firm, who's here to answer any questions, James Dean, our landscape architect, excuse me, and oak tree consultant, who's also been in the area for about forty years, and he's here to answer any questions. Regarding architecture, I just want to mention that we continue to interview and consult with a number of architects. However, we haven't selected an architect or architects at this time, because each home will be a custom design. We're, again, interviewing and continuing down that path, but we're not there yet. First, I want to, I want to thank, you know, the neighbors, the city staff, particularly Mayor Andy Fox, who's not here, Scott, who stepped out, Tracy, you know, for their hard work, diligence, and dedication in working with us. We spent a lot of time together here over the last few months, really trying to pull this thing together, and without their help, we wouldn't be here tonight. You know, we first started this project four and a half years ago, July two thousand nine. And the last time that we were in front of the council was in December two thousand twelve, a little over a year ago. At that council meeting, it was decided to continue the hearing, to allow our design team to reach out to the neighbors, particularly those immediate neighbors, and fully investigate and address their concerns, and come up with a plan that is, the plan is here tonight, that really addresses all their concerns, and at the same time, keeps in mind what the city's general plan is for this piece of property. And I think our team and neighbors can agree, that process has been long, exhausting, and quite frankly, challenging at times, but I think we can also agree it's been a very successful process. In our initial meetings with the city staff, which, again, started over four and a half years ago, we discussed initially with the city what their expectations were for the Miller Ranch, which is an unincorporated, as Pam mentioned, isolated island of agricultural uses, and, and how this proposed development, which is in front of you today, this low-density development, was more consistent with the city's well-regarded general plan, as well as what entitlements would be provided. You know, in fact, when KSK first contacted my office about Miller Ranch, they walked in with a tentative map prepared by another local firm here, that had proposed twenty-two units with no open space. And, four and a half years ago. And here we are now, with about half of that number of lots, thirteen, and we have a total of nine and a half acres combined of open space and this buffer, HOA maintained buffer zone or buffer lot. You know, in that regard, I would just want to, just kind of quickly go through a little, just the last year, since, since December of two thousand twelve, some of the, some of the revisions that we've done in working with the neighbors to bring this plan to the full level that it is today. You know, initially, our two thousand twelve plan had two accesses. The actual main access was on Upper Ranch Road, and it had another access off of Canaan. Today, our current plan has a main access on, off of Canaan Road, with the Upper Ranch Road only and emergency access only, so that's going to be gated and not used except for in emergency situations. In doing that, we are going to have a median break in Canaan Road, so that we can get traffic going both directions that can enter the, enter the project. And in fact, the one thing is that the oak tree, it was mentioned there was some oak tree removal, five of those oak trees have to do with that median break on Canaan Road. There's only one tree, one tree on site, which when we was here four and a half years ago, didn't qualify as a size enough tree to be considered, it's grown in the last four and a half years, so now it is. Again, far as the number of lots, a year ago, it was fourteen. When it came to my office, it was twenty-two. A year ago, it was fourteen, now it's thirteen. As far as open space or buffer zones, our initial plan had a twenty-foot-wide buffer zone between the homes on the west side, those are those three existing residences, for a total of about point four-four acres, and those were just going to be easement areas over top of the individual-owned properties. Today, we have a two hundred and fifty-foot-wide green belt lot that's along that westerly side. We have a hundred-foot-wide max, it's kind of an odd shape, kind of a trapezoidal shape along the south side, for a total of seven acres. And that's going to be a separate HOA lot that's maintained by the HOA rather than individual homeowners, to ensure that it's properly managed. The open space lot is on the north end of the property. Initially, it was two and a half acres, that remains two and a half acres. Again, combined with the landscape buffer, it is, we have a nine and a half acres total. The grading for the property initially balanced on site over seventy-two thousand cubic yards. Today, it's slightly over fifty, well, fifty-eight thousand cubic yards, for a reduction of nineteen percent. I estimated twenty when I talked to the neighbors at first, so I got pretty close. On the grading, the total grading combined is sixty-eight thousand, and the reason being is the, to create this green belt zone, we don't want to leave it just as flat, you know, we're going to do some contour and mounding and stuff, because we want to make it like a park-like setting, a natural but park-like, want to make it look very attractive, so it looks like it was belonging there and someone just didn't put it in place. So there's some grading, because it's seven acres, so there's some grading associated with that. Still reducing the grading in total. The, as far as the grading goes, our initial approval, which I think we can all agree is typical for projects like this, there's no constraints on how long it takes to do the grading. In our effort to minimize impacts to the neighbors, we've agreed to complete the rough grading within sixty days, which is very unique, and, and a challenge. We can do it, but it's a challenge. Another thing we, we agreed to is on the construction, again, this was in consideration of the neighbors, that the five homes that are on the west and south side of the property, those are going to be built at the same time simultaneously, and they have to be completed in eighteen months. The idea behind that, again, is it further isolates the surrounding neighbors who have been there through the landscape buffer, and these homes being built at one time, so future development is going to be long and far away from them, so they won't see it. The mix, we initially had nine single stories, five two-stories, we now have six single stories and seven two-stories, it's pretty much the same, but otherwise, you know, I think in closing, I just want to say that, you know, we're in agreement with the proposed conditions. I want to, again, thank the city staff, the neighbors, you know, all the team members, it was a lot of work, a lot of work, and everybody had to give, and I think we, we all gave to a point where we came up with a plan that is really, takes into everybody's concerns, and really came up to a really nice plan. And I think it's going to be, it's certainly consistent with the city's general plan for that area, and it's certainly going to be a tremendous asset to the neighborhood and North Ranch and Thousand Oaks at large. And that's really all, that's my presentation, and Mark will now come down and speak. And I'm here, of course, to answer any questions. And I'm here, of course, to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Liston. Mark Kestenbaum? Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a, no, we don't, okay. Mr. Kestenbaum?
Hi. Good evening, council, Mayor Protem. I'm Mark Kestenbaum, managing partner of KSK Investments LP, the owner and developer of the project. I'm here today to talk on behalf of the project and to answer any questions that you may have. When I came to the council about a year ago to ask for a continuance, we were given a very clear signal and very clear instructions, and our mandate was to go back, sit down with our neighbors, discuss with them again what their concerns were, further modify the project, and try and develop a project that was more amenable to the media community. Well, we heard and we listened and we did our very best to do so, and I think that at the end of the day, we came out with a successful compromise and an MOU or memorandum of understanding that truly works for both sides. It took us about nine months of collaborative effort, but we were able to resolve our differences, and that was a great thing. And before moving on, I would like to thank Mayor Andy Fox. I'm disappointed he's not here. He really, truly was a tremendous help. I mean, he did a remarkable job. We were far apart, and he bridged the gap, he brought us together, and he got the deal done. I mean, he really, he was superb. It was a challenging task, and he didn't shy away from it, and I think you should get credit for that. The MOU itself, as Leonard pointed out, addresses the concerns of the neighbors while still providing us with the opportunity to build a strong project that'll be a real asset for the community. Without going into all the detail that he provided, I'll just say a couple of things. The project will provide a supply of new executive homes to the area. It'll showcase and highlight the North Ranch community. It'll include substantial open space and significant landscaping that will blend well and complement the surrounding homes. And ultimately, the project is consistent with the general plan for the city and the guidelines for orderly development, and we as the developer, we agree with all the conditions. Before I finish, I also want to take just a moment to thank Scott Mitnick and Tracy Noonan and the entire staff, who really, you know, from start to finish, worked very hard on this project. And I think that as a city, you guys have really dedicated professionals who care deeply about the city and the developments that occur within it, and it's something you don't often see. I mean, all the phone calls get returned, all the emails get answered, everybody is just on it, and it's really, it's a pleasure to work with them. Ultimately, the project has been a four and a half or a five-year process, you know, we started looking at the project back in March of 2009. I think I had like one kid then, I have four now. But in the end, we were able really to garner support from city staff, from the local HOAs, and from the neighbors, and it was really, it was a long and challenging road, but we got there and we're proud of that accomplishment. And I hope that the council tonight recognizes all the collaborative effort that went into it and the cooperation that went into it, and I ask that you approve the project. It's going to be a great thing for the city. And thank you, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Kestenbaum. Any questions for Mr. Liston or Mr. Kestenbaum? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I do have cards for questions only from Mark Sellers and from the Ogners, who are residents on Upper Ranch Road, Neil McGurk, who was Maguire, I beg your pardon, counsel for the residents, and also Leo Orange, who lives on Upper Ranch Road. You had a question? For who?
A question for two of the residents, one of whom is the council representative.
All right.
Is it Mr. Neil Maguire?
Oh, yes, that's correct. Mr. Maguire, would you mind coming down, please?
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Mayor Protem Adams and Councilmember Dale Penney. I'm Neil Maguire on behalf of the residents and happy to answer a question.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you are here today. I thought for a moment perhaps we only had two speakers. I was glad to hear that you and a couple of residents did submit cards, because I did want to get basically your reaction or consent to this challenging mediation and settlement or goal that you reached.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity, and we're happy to appear tonight on behalf of all of the residents of Upper Ranch Road that have been involved in this process and offer our support for this project. As the applicants have stated, it has been a long mediation process, but it has also been a successful one, and I'll echo the sentiments towards our appreciation for Mayor Fox. In particular, I know that it was a unique situation, having Mayor Fox and at the time a sitting council member, or Mayor Protem, participate in the mediation, but the unique perspective that he offered was really invaluable here, and I think was really what tied the parties together and resulted, excuse me, in the project that you have before you tonight that can be supported by both sides. And I'd also like to echo the support for Tracy Noonan, Scott Mitnick, John Prescott, Pam Leopold. We had meetings after hours, we had meetings on weekends to accommodate everyone's schedule, and it was really an all-out effort by city staff to get the parties together so that we can, again, appear before you tonight with a united front. So thank you for the opportunity to offer those sentiments and for the opportunity to go on record for our support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. I also have five written statement cards, all in favor of the project. All right, thank you, everyone. Let us go back to staff for any follow-up comments.
No comments at this time.
All right. You know, I have a comment, which I should have mentioned earlier, but I will at this point, and this is for staff, about the trees. Tree number 123, small tree, the oak tree report says we ought to transplant it. We don't have a problem with that, do we?
Actually, it's tree number 123C.
C, beg your pardon.
And we do have concerns about transplanting that tree. We could try to do it, however, a lot of times it's easier to transplant a new tree because it adapts quicker to the soil conditions and it would grow faster, but, and probably take a little bit more water. So we will, we could try to transplant that tree, but I think all in all, we are looking at possibly placing a new tree, and actually, it would be two 24-inch box trees and one 36-inch box tree because of that tree that we're removing.
Mm-hmm. But we could transplant it. I mean, it's not a huge tree.
We could try.
And the oak tree report recommends that we transplant it, as a matter of fact.
We could certainly try to do that.
All right. And the second thing about trees, there are five oak trees on the median, four of which are in A condition, A in appearance, A in condition. And if you go to the oak tree report, Mr. Dean is saying that in regards to those trees, five replacement trees planted near the gated entry to the project. Why would we not just transplant the, well, four of the five to that gated entry? They're good-looking trees, healthy. Maybe Mr. Dean would like to comment on that, but...
I think I'll defer that question, the answer to it, to our oak tree consultant.
All right, yeah, he's right up here. All right.
Good evening, James Dean.
Hi, Mr. Dean.
Actually, interesting, I was standing here with all these gentlemen. I've been here 46 years, so I've lived with all of them. Go ahead with your question.
My question was, on the five oak trees on the median?
Yes.
That will be, the median, of course, is going to be altered, so there's an entry, and those five trees will be necessarily removed. Four of the five rated in your report are A and A, A for appearance and A for condition.
Yes.
So, and then you're suggesting, well, let's plant five trees, what did you say here? Plant five trees near the gated entry. So why don't we just take the four of the five A-rated trees and put them there?
We can certainly explore that. The problem that we have with it is the width of the median is probably not large enough to support the sized box that we're going to need to move those trees, meaning that we would have to undersize the box, which puts them at risk, a slight risk. In my opinion, if that were true, I think it could be done. We could certainly explore it, but I think you're going to find the boxes are too narrow. The boxes that are required to make the tree live require more space than is available to dig, is what I'm trying to say.
Because the median's too narrow?
Yeah.
I see. How long would they stay in the box before they were transplanted to their new?
Well, I actually, believe it or not, I was responsible for planting those trees about 35 years ago. They're not native trees, they were brought to the site, so they've done well. I don't know, repeat your question?
My question was, how long would they stay boxed before you actually put it back into the ground?
Well, what would, the obstacle, the other obstacle that we would have would be to maintain them for a year and a half on-site, watering them and maintaining them, that's a bit of a struggle. Might be better if that were, the issue would be to replace them with another tree.
I see. All right, so they'd have to sit on-site in a year and a half in an undersized box, and that could jeopardize them.
That's my opinion, yes.
All right, okay, all right, that's good, Mr. Dean.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. And, I'm sorry, Councilmember Price had a question?
I think we have the city's consultant here as well, perhaps we could hear?
Oh, yes, hi.
The same questions and responses, or maybe not the same responses, but...
Would you like to comment?
Whenever we transplant a tree, there's considerable shock that the trees goes through, so they do have to be healthy trees, and these are healthy trees. But a very large problem that we face with transplants is the holding time. There's a much higher success rate when we can take that tree and immediately put it into the ground. The problem with this site is that there really isn't any space that's going to be unchanged. Everything is going to be moving around, so that means that those trees would have to sit in a box, and maintaining those trees for a year, year and a half, and then putting them in the ground is going to really put them in jeopardy. And it's really a much better, better in the long run, better in numbers, better from all sides, to get our standard three replacement trees, two 24-inch box oaks and one 36-inch box oak, that will then be delivered to the site, they'll be incorporated into the design, they'll be put into the landscaping, and we can certainly expect, you know, 100% rate with those versus the transplants, which are always tricky.
He said that better than I did, and I agree with him.
Thank you both. And I do understand the limitations involved here with the smaller box and the time that it would be above ground, but, I mean, I always hate to lose an oak tree, and I want to try to save it if I can. 123C, though, you wouldn't have a problem transplanting that, right?
Receiving two 24-inch boxes and one 36-inch box is much better than trying to deal with C, with 123C.
Why do you say that?
For the same, for the same reason. If we were to transplant that tree, it has to go somewhere. We really don't have any place for it to go, and if, even if we did, and it's a small tree. I mean, if we did have a place for it to go, which we don't, it would still then have to be maintained during the construction process, which is a difficult process. Much better to replace that tree with the three nursery-grown trees, you know, per our ordinance, get them into the design, properly irrigated and maintained, and we're going to see, in the long run, a much better success with that.
Again, I agree with that. One more thing, too, that tree happens to be at a growth size that I believe that the cost to transplant it would exceed the cost to replace it with another tree at a proper time. And it's actually growing in close to an existing large oak tree we're going to preserve, so there's, I think the consideration probably should come out.
All right. All right, gentlemen, appreciate that. You know, I mean, they're protected species, and I always like to try to explore any possible methods to preserve the tree, but I do see the limitations here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one other quick question from Ms. Leopold. The business of building the five houses in 18 months, I've been involved with construction and home remodeling, and I know that, you know, you don't always get things done when you, you know, within that timeframe. Is there any, what happens if it goes over 18 months?
That's a good question.
Then it's 19 months, I guess, right? I mean, so it's a best efforts, I take it.
It is the best effort, and I think there are some parameters built into the, any extensions needed, so...
All right, okay, that's fine. I mean, I know there's a little sensitivity on the residents' part to get this thing done in a timely manner, so, all right, thank you, Ms. Leopold. And Councilmember Bill of the Penya?
Thank you. I'm glad you did mention that because I was wondering whether, I mean, this is all an agreement, mutual agreement, with no consequences built in for not meeting deadlines. Is that what this is? No?
There's actually a side agreement between the developer and the residents that the city is not a part of. This is a side agreement between them, that they've, it's been executed by all parties that do have consequences or penalties, or whatever you want to call them, for failure to comply with certain terms and conditions of the city. In addition, the city has its standard enforcement provisions if we don't think that the developer is diligently trying to, you know, build the project, but based on my conversations with them, they're very anxious to.
Okay, very good, because we do have a couple of projects in the city with a history that took more than 10 years to be built, and obviously, the neighbors wouldn't want to see that happen. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further, Ms. Irwin? Okay, if there's no further questions, the applicant, Mr. Liston and Mr. Kestenbaum, do you have any rebuttal or further thoughts? We're all good? All right? Then I am going to, yeah, I know, just think if I had anything. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll take it to discussion with my fellow council members and/or motion. Ms. Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I'm going to move the staff recommendations, one, two, and three, and it's, I just want to comment because so often, especially at the federal level right now, we see people not coming together, not finding solutions. When we were here a year ago, there was no common ground at all between the residents and the developers, and we asked Mr. Fox to work with the residents and the developers to see if we could, if we could find some solution to this, and nobody was under any requirement to find a solution. So I really, I really want to thank the residents first for being willing to come back to the table and see if there was a solution that they could live with, and I want to commend Mr. Fox again for an outstanding mediation. He's done this five or six times since we've been on the council, and his efforts have always been great. I think the staff did an outstanding job, and the developers and owners of the lands, the consultant of the property and the consultants, you guys, I mean, you were willing to give a lot, too, to get this done. So it is just a model of how governments and residents and the private sector should work together to come to a solution that's in the best interest of everybody involved. So again, that's my motion, and I commend all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Comments to the motion? All right. Do you have one? Do you have one?
No, I, I am in agreement with the motion. It is not often that we see two private parties actually finding common ground, finding compromise, so this is indeed a very good example, and it did need the help of the city, staff, and Mayor Fox, and the mediation did come at a price for city staff and the city of Thousand Oaks. So I personally don't think we should always be in the mediation business unless it is, excuse me, an urgent, a really urgent matter. Excuse me. But Mr. Fox does have excellent mediation skills, has a degree in mediation, and that obviously came in very, very handy, and so I'm glad that settlement and agreement was reached, and I will definitely support the motion.
All right, well, thank you all. I will say that Councilmember Fox, by the way, for those of you who didn't hear my announcement in the first place, is an incident commander on a small fire that erupted on PCH, so he's attending to that right now. He, he would have, in fact, recused himself on this issue as it stands, yes? Oh, okay.
I, I just want to say ditto to what they said.
Okay. I'm sorry. He, he would have recused himself on this issue because of the mediation they went through, and, and I, and I know we all feel the same way, I want to commend Mayor Fox for getting involved with this. He spent a lot of time on it, a lot of personal time, Sundays, weeknights, working with residents, working with the developer, as if he's not stretched enough already. And I think Councilmember Bill of the Penney is correct, we spent a lot of staff time on this thing. Took four and a half years, which is way longer than most land use projects take. I mean, I pretty much thought all along it was a compatible project for the area, but the neighbors were alarmed about the project, and, and the lesson here is this, in my opinion, this is an infill project. Infill projects are contentious, more contentious than some of the big projects we put in ten, fifteen years ago, because there's existing neighbors, and they are not, are not always going to be pleased about what's going in next door to them. So the, the lesson to be learned here is if you're going to try to develop what's little left in Thousand Oaks, and it's a quote-unquote infill project, you've got to do your homework with the neighbors. You've got to, before you come in front of us, it's really wise to have worked out as much as possible with the surrounding neighborhood. It cuts the time of the project, it cuts our staff time, and in this particular case, we had to have our mayor get involved to mediate the thing. So, I think ultimately it turned out great, it's a good project, everybody's happy, so that's a good thing. So, with that little editorial comment, I will then call for a vote on the Miller Ranch project. Vote please.
The motion carries four zero with Councilmember Fox absent, and the ordinance title is an ordinance approving pre-zoning of property located east side of Upper Ranch Road approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of Canaan Road, two thousand Upper Ranch Road, zone change two thousand ten dash seven oh one eight five.
We have a, another public hearing, and that is Agenda Item 8B, has to do with water and wastewater rates. If you would call that public hearing, please. Madam City Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Water and Wastewater Rates and Connection Charges Adjustments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for the City Council and official city records should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Eight people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, the speakers are allowed four minutes each. The yellow light will display when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I believe Mr. Spurgeon is going to present the staff report. Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you.
Our Public Works Director, by the way.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protim and Council. This item before you is for water and wastewater rate adjustments. Our recommendations will be to adopt two different ordinances, one for water, one for wastewater. This was before you in November, we provided a fair amount of detail on our water and wastewater financial plans and the asset management plan at that time. We also set tonight as the public hearing for this, as that's required under Proposition 218, as well as our, our ordinance code. There are over fifty-four thousand ballots that were mailed out to residents in, on compliance with Proposition 218. One of the things that we did this year is, is new. We've never done this before, and that is an asset management plan. We talked about that in some detail, again, back in November. Just to summarize, we have significant assets in our water and wastewater infrastructure systems, as you can see here, almost a half billion dollars worth of water infrastructure, eight hundred and forty million dollars in wastewater, with about a hundred and thirty-seven of that being at the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant. We're not going to go back through the detail that we did in, in presenting the financial plans, the, the model, the asset management program. Tonight, I'm going to go through and provide a summary of the proposed rate adjustments. We will have some comments from the General Manager Susan Mulligan, Mulligan, from the Cuyagus Municipal Water District later. She's here with us in the audience, there's Susan. Next to her is Scott Quaidy, who is the Board of Directors President, he's the elected official on that board from Thousand Oaks, and Dan Smith is their Finance Director. Assisting me on the dais tonight is Sanjay Ghar, next to me, our consultant that worked on the, the plans, Deputy Director Cliff Finley, and of course, John Adams, our Finance Director. To summarize, as stated, we have significant assets, and one of the things that our rate adjustments will do is incorporate a long-term, a funding for long-term replacement, rehabilitation, capital maintenance of those assets, and that equals about a six and a half million per year funding level. It's about half, half and half, for, half in water and half in wastewater. The wastewater rates are proposed to be adjusted five percent per year, about. Water, total of a little over seven percent, which includes passing through the increase in water purchase costs from Cuyagus, and then some connection fee adjustments, which I'll mention a little bit further in a moment. Wastewater rates, here are the proposed adjustments. You can see that there's about a dollar forty increase per month, per residential, for, for wastewater in the first year, a dollar thirty-five for the second, that's about a five and a half, and then a five percent increase for those two years. We also conducted a cost of service study for the wastewater system, essentially balancing costs among different user groups in response to changing quantity and quality characteristics of wastewater flow. And these, the, the new allocations as a result of that study, again, we, we covered that in some detail last time, we can certainly go into any of your questions going forward on any of these topics, of course. But the, the results of those, of that study are incorporated into the proposed wastewater rates. Here's a comparison with some of our neighbors. We are still very competitive, as you can see here, the proposed rate's at twenty-six eighty-five. You know, wastewater rates reflect a lot of, a lot of things, one of which are the challenges of meeting regulatory requirements. And, for instance, in Moore Park, the County Waterworks District, their rate is somewhat less than ours has been. They have much less stringent discharge requirements than City Thousand Oaks, and that's reflected clearly in their, in their service charge. Conversely, the Los Virginies Municipal Water District has very stringent discharge requirements. They, their wastewater enters the Malibu Creek, and that's reflected here, and that's pretty much typical of, of other rates as well. Another thing we did differently this time is we looked at our connection fees and asked ourselves what would be a more appropriate level of, of connection fee, and how to calculate that, considering that our system is built out, we have no further large developments in the city. Connection fees have served us well over time in response to it being a developing city. So what we did this time is fairly simple calculation, actually. We took the total value of the systems, whether it's wastewater or water, divided it by the total number of connections, as measured by equivalent dwelling units, which is what an EDU is, and came up with a buy-in cost of a certain dollar per EDU amount. For wastewater, the proposed adjustment for the connection fees, now we're calling them buy-in fees, are shown here, actually a reduction, as noted, to seventy, almost seventy-three hundred dollars per connection. Comparing connection fees with our neighbors, we're about in the middle of the pack, so I think reflects reasonableness of, of those fees. Now, I want to get into water, and as you know, water, our water rates are made up of various components. There is a base rate, which is different for the, for the meter size that you have. The proposed adjustments are shown here for the first and second year, depending on the meter size, about three point one percent per year adjustment. The water quantity weight rate that covers single-family residential and other single connections is shown here with a proposed adjustment of about thirty cents, up to thirty-three cents, depending on the year and the tier, per unit. Base rates are a little different on the smaller meters for multiple family, so those, those rates are shown here, but again, the three point one percent increase is consistent there. And then the water quantity weight rate for non-single-family residential, again, the adjustments are about thirty-one and thirty-two cents per unit for the two different years. You put all these different components together, and you have, we can put together estimated monthly water charges, and this is really the, probably the, the best way to show the comparison of, and the impact of the proposed changes. What we've done with this chart is provide a range of water usage, including low level, average, high, and then very high. You can see the different quantity for, per month for each, and it gives a sense of the increases, the, the impact on these users from the proposed changes for the first year. For an average user, for instance, the adjustments would result in a, about a six dollar per month increase. Comparing our water rates in this manner to, to our neighbors, you can see, again, we're about in the middle of the pack. Some of the lower, a couple of lower users, lower rates here shown, Los Virginies and City Simi Valley. I, I can tell you that Simi Valley will be looking at probably fairly significant adjustments later this year, they've started looking at that. Actually, their, their wastewater rates will be going up, but probably within the next month or so, they're, they'll be taking about an eleven and a half percent increase on wastewater to their city council. That's the City Simi Valley. Los Virginies, it's hard to say, I think they've been operating in a negative position for several years, that is drawing from reserves to pay the bills. I think that's probably a result of, of why they are somewhat lower. Water connection fees, similarly to wastewater, we did the system buy-in approach, and the adjustment, proposed adjustments are shown here to increase to seventy-four hundred dollars, a little over, per connection. I would note that if you add water and wastewater together, which would be typical for, say, a new home, you would have to get a, connect both connections. The resulting, since wastewater goes down, water does go up here, but the resulting impact is only about a six hundred dollar increase, and that's less than a half percent. So, really, we're kind of status quo, if you look at it from that perspective. Comparison of water connection fees with, with our neighbors, again, we're about a little bit on the, above, the middle of the pack, but again, probably reasonable as, as shown there. Now, our water rate adjustments, the primary driving factor is the increasing cost for imported water, and that's shown here in this study, or this, this slide here. And I appreciate Cuyagus staff being here, and, and their director, their board president, and they're going to actually give you a, a quick presentation at the end of my comments, so that it helps put in perspective, you know, what's going on at the state level? Why are these costs going up? And what can, what is Cuyagus doing, both within their own system and at the Metropolitan Water District level, to help keep these costs down? But you can see here, there's been a consistent five to six percent increase per year recently, and it's projected into the near future. Over the last seven years, the imported water costs have doubled. Gone from six hundred dollars per acre foot to about twelve hundred in just seven, seven or eight years. In that environment, we are very, very committed to keeping what costs that we have control over contained, trying to keep our internal costs low. Generally, these are some of the areas that we have employed to, to do that, and we can talk certainly in more detail about any of these in answer to your questions. I'll just touch on a couple of these. Staffing levels have been the same in our water system, for instance, for the last decade. We have added infrastructure to our water system in that time, and that infrastructure has aged and become more costly to operate and maintain. So, one way that we've been able to do that is through automation, and our system is, we continually look for ways to make our, our water system more efficient, operate more efficient in an automated fashion, so we don't have to add staff. In fact, in the future, we may, may be able to maintain, again, the same, same levels. The last one I want to, the last bullet here, local water resource projects, I want to comment on that because a lot of, a lot of folks, and, and I get it, I'm a, I'm a Cal Am customer, and they're a hundred percent imported water, and, and those rates continue to go up, too. You know, we feel that we're at the mercy of imported water, because we have no local supplies, we have no way to contain those costs and sort of, you know, have our own destiny out there, so to speak. Other purveyors, such as the city of Moore Park, they have local supplies, they have groundwater as well as imported water, same with City Camarillo. Their water rates are lower than ours, and that's why. So, one of the projects that we're currently working on is with the city of Camarillo to develop a regional groundwater desalter, so taking some salty groundwater that can't be used really anywhere else, desalting it, treating it, and then turning it into potable water. We'll be talking more with you about that project going forward, but staff has been involved in going through the planning phases of that, that project. The other one is, and there'll be a contract coming back to you within the, the coming months, to study our own Cano Valley groundwater basin. For many years, that was the supply of water for this community. That groundwater ran out in the late sixties, because that was it, everybody was pumping from it. Imported water has replaced it, but there's groundwater down there, and people know it because it's seeping out of the ground from, in various places around the city. So we're going to look at how viable it is, how much water's there, what kind of quality there is, what we have to do to treat it. But again, both of these approaches, in the long run, would be significantly less costly than imported water. And I think this, and clearly this is the time to be doing this, in the past, when imported water was half the cost it is now, these projects would be more expensive, but not anymore. So, some examples of what we're doing here at the city to try to contain costs. Last slide I have before we go to Susan Mulligan, this one is a, what this shows is, over time, over the last seven years, wholesale water rates have increased, as you see various, various percentages over, depending on the year. If you sum these all up, ninety-one percent wholesale water has increased- If you sum these all up, 91% wholesale water has increased over this time period. At the same time, our city water rates have increased cumulatively about 65%. Now, we obviously have to pass through our imported water costs, but it's not, it's not one-for-one, because only about maybe 2/3 to 70% of our water budget is imported water cost. So if you apply that ratio to this 91% cumulative wholesale rate increase over this time period, that's about 62% of our, of our rate increases have been attributable to the wholesale increases. So if our total is 65, that was 62. We've only had to increase our own, for our own costs, our water rates about 2% to 3% over this seven-year period. So I wanted to point that out because, again, that supports the way that staff and council through your direction have, have kept our own costs as low as we can. So as I mentioned, Susan Mulligan, general manager from CAGUS, will come up to the podium, and she's going to answer two questions. The first is, what do the imported water rates pay for? And then the second is, how CAGUS has worked to keep their rates down and also worked with Metropolitan to keep imported water rates down? So Susan has just a few slides, and then we'll go to questions for you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, for a little time to explain these costs that Jay has described to you. What I'd like to do is start with what your water rates pay for. Jay's going to help me move the slides forward. Really, what they pay for is to move water down here from Northern California and all the way to the city, starting up in Lake Orville, down through the Sacramento Delta, through the state water project, into Castaic Lake. And those, on the previous slide, were all facilities owned and operated by the State Department of Water Resources. From Castaic Lake, it goes into pipes owned and operated by Metropolitan Water District, down through the San Fernando Valley, and then in Chatsworth, CAGUS picks it up, delivers it through pipes through Simi Valley and out, and distributes it through the Canale Valley. It pays for pumping. It takes a lot of pumping to get the water down here from Northern California and over to Thousand Oaks. That's one of the pumping stations on the state water project, and the toe-of-the-dam pumping station is one here in Thousand Oaks that delivers water to the North Ranch area. Pays for water treatment. All the water that comes to Thousand Oaks is treated in the Jensen filtration plant by Metropolitan Water District in Granada Hills, and during outages from Metropolitan, it's treated at CAGUS's Lake Bard Plant in Thousand Oaks. It pays for drought and emergency storage, and that includes lakes up and down the state, throughout Southern California, in Thousand Oaks, and it also includes groundwater basins, water storage programs in Kern County, water storage programs in the Moore Park area, so that we have water that can get us through the times when we don't have water coming down from the sky. So where does the money go? Of this imported supply that you pay for, 76% goes to Metropolitan Water District. One more click, Jay. And of that, almost a third goes to the State Department of Water Resources to operate the state water project. Of the total, CAGUS's capital is about 20%, and our operations and maintenance of the total is 4%. So why are costs going up? They're clearly going up faster than inflation is, and there are really three main factors. One is increasing regulation, increasing population, and aging infrastructure. Next. So recent regulations and court rulings have increased costs in several ways. Metropolitan has had to do ozone, install ozone on their five filtration plants. That adds up to $5 billion that they had to spend to retrofit their filtration plants to meet new regulations. They've spent that over about the last 10 years. One of the other pressures is, that's a regulatory pressure, is Los Angeles Department of Water has lost, power has lost about half its supply from the Owens Valley because it has lost court cases and had to do dust abatement up in the Owens Valley. So about half that supply is gone, which means there's more competition for the supply we rely on, which is the state water project. And then finally, I think many of you have heard about the pumping restrictions in the Sacramento Delta. Since 2007, we have been restricted on the amount of water that can come out of the Sacramento Delta because the pumps that come out of there suck in smelt, Delta smelt, and also some salmon. And last winter, when it rained in November and December, and then didn't rain anymore, the pumps were required to be shut off in November and December, and we lost the ability to put any water into the reservoirs in the state water project system, which is a big reason why we have a drought in the state this year. We lost a lot of opportunity to move water. So let's talk about population increases. Go ahead, Jay, and click on the others. It isn't just population right here in our county that affects our water supplies. Its population increases in Nevada and Arizona up until about 2000, they weren't taking their full allocation on the Colorado River supply. And again, although we don't directly get Colorado River water, all of Southern California does, and if there's less water available from the Colorado River, there's more demand on the state water project, which is where we get our water. So Nevada, Arizona, and in addition, population increases in our state that put more demand on the state water project. So with less water available, both due to regulation and also due to population increases, Metropolitan Water District has been spending money on projects that maintain reliability. Those old supplies, the Colorado River and the state project, were pretty cheap water, but they've had to invest in more. They've built Diamond Valley Lake out in Hemet, and they've invested money in aquifer storage projects, as has CAGUS, which are really like lakes underground. And it is those investments that is why we aren't in a water allocation right now, despite the really dry situation in the state of California. There's water and storage from that investment that you've all made with your water rates in those projects. Next. They've invested in land-fallowing programs to have farmers stop farming and produce water and turn their water over. They've subsidized local projects. The projects that Jay has talked about, that the city could invest in for groundwater, developing brackish groundwater, are subsidized by Metropolitan and could be, and they've been subsidizing those, and they could probably subsidize the Thousand Oaks one. And then CAGUS has invested quite a lot of money in a regional brine line. We've built an outfall off Wanimi Beach, about a mile long. We've built pipe up into Camarillo, and we're headed probably up the Santa Rosa Valley and to Simi Valley, which makes those desalters possible that Jay has talked about. The final reason is the infrastructure. Metropolitan's infrastructure is 75 years old, CAGUS's is 50 years old, and we've had to replace facilities. This one here on the slide is the Thousand Oaks Reservoir Project. We replaced a 50-year-old tank. Mayor Bill de la Peña came out and dedicated the reservoir when we opened it up last year. So what are we doing to keep rates as low as possible? In the case of Metropolitan Water District, we limit the cost, you can just go bring them all up, Jay. We consistently send a message of fiscal restraint to Metropolitan. I make public comment at meetings, at their board meetings and at their member agency meetings with us. We are also doing public outreach for the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. That is the least expensive option for water for us in the future in this area. Next. So how does CAGUS control capital costs? Over the last 15 years, we've gotten $40 million in state and federal grants. We defer projects until they're needed. Growth has slowed down, and we've deferred a number of projects. We aggressively inspect our infrastructure so that we have planned and bid projects, not emergencies. And then finally, we have a very small staff and contract for services as needed. How we control operations and maintenance costs, which is 4% of our total. Energy management. CAGUS operates four hydroelectric generators, building a fifth, generates hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. In revenues, we do off-peak pumping, rotated our fleet for fuel-efficient vehicles. We have a very small staff, and we keep our staff small, contract for services as needed. 2012, our board reduced employee benefits for existing and new employees, and we invest in automation to reduce labor. Automation measures have been effective. We've added 18 groundwater wells, 15 miles of large diameter pipe, a large pump station, a storage tank, and an ocean outfall, and we haven't added a single staff member to do that. So what consumers do to manage costs? Minimize their water use. There's a website where they can get tips and rebates, and in coordination with the city and some other entities, CAGUS invested in the California True Colors Garden on Jan's Road, and there's some really beautiful plants out there that people can go look at and buy for themselves. I think the one final slide, Jay. The final slide, I would just like to give you a little bit of news from the Sacramento Bay. So there are now mandatory, what have your water rates bought you? We now have mandatory water use restrictions right now in San Francisco, Monterey, Mendocino County, Sacramento, Marin County, other areas, San Joaquin, they can't grow crops. The reason we don't have that here is that investment in storage projects, and that is what you've been paying for over the last several years. Jeff Kightlinger, general manager of Metropolitan, said yesterday in the Sacramento Bee, "We'll have plenty of water in 2014 and 15, and if there's a drought, we may still have enough in 2016. We have enormous reserves of stored water and have lowered our demand substantially. If you look around the state, not many regions have done that, and that's what's needed." Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Susan. Before the, or at the end of the public hearing, the city clerk will give you a report on how many protests have been received per the balloting for Prop 218. So that's our presentation, Mayor Protem Adam, and we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. That was very informative. And are there any questions for Ms. Mulligan or Mr. Spurgeon? Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. It was interesting to see that CAGUS, at least, is taking steps to control operation and maintenance costs. As recently as about 10 months ago, I spoke in opposition to a rate increase by a competitor, a California water service, and they proposed a 40% increase over the two years. I'm a, I'm in that district, unfortunately. So, and the number-one topic was the cost of employee benefits, salaries, the number of employees, and so forth. Metropolitan Water District had given a significant increase in benefits to employees to the point where even the city of Thousand Oaks wrote a protest letter to MWD. And I think that is probably weighing on the minds of many residents who are customers of the city's water service. The fact that everybody is conserving water and is trying to conserve water and has taken steps to do that, yet the rates keep going up. How, you being in the field, being a professional, how can you explain, and is MWD, Water, MWD, actually listening to customers, and have they taken steps to reduce their costs of, in operations and maintenance?
They have. Those high rate increases a few years ago have created pressure on Metropolitan Water District from ourselves and others, and they do have difficulty with their unions with decreasing their labor costs, you know, salaries and benefits, but what they have done is they have not filled jobs, and they have reduced their staffing levels fairly significantly over about the last five years. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they're aware of our concerns and they're working on reducing staffing levels.
Okay. At the hearing that I attended with Jay Spurgeon last year, the other water purveyor in Thousand Oaks, which services Westlake Village and also the Park District, sports fields, they wanted to hire more people. They said they, because of new technology, they needed to hire the experts to run these new machines or computers, which came as a surprise. When everybody else is cutting back, they want to hire more people. So that didn't make any sense. Can you speak to that at all? It may not be, it's not a fair question, but I'm asking it anyway.
I think I can speak in general terms. The goal that we shoot for with automation is to ultimately reduce labor costs, and hopefully what you're doing is you're reducing a sort of larger number of, a little bit less expensive labor, but it does require some higher-level technicians and the like to run the automation system. But if the automation system costs more to run than it reduces labor on the other end, that's certainly something that needs to be thought about. And that's, that's how we gauge our investment in automation. So yes, you might need some higher-level, higher-cost employees to manage the automation, but you ought to be able to reduce somewhere else, because that's the idea of the automation.
I did have a question for, and thank you again, Ms. Mulligan.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
For Mr. Spurgeon, just so it's perfectly clear, the city of Thousand Oaks imports 100% of its water, virtually.
That's correct.
Yeah. We don't have the benefit of some of the other cities. We have groundwater we can draw and wells. We get it all from Metropolitan Water District from up north, pump it down to us 100%. So we're looking at about a 7.5% rate increase for the next year and the year after, and if I got my numbers right, about 4.5% of that is to cover the increased costs of this imported water. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the other three, tell us what the other three is going to be for.
Essentially, the other 3% is for capital improvement needs and long-term asset management replacement, rehabilitation of those, you know, half billion, almost half billion dollars of assets in our water system.
And our, is not our capital reserve underfunded at this point?
That's correct, yeah. The targets that we're looking for of, I think it's about 6.5 million, we're about 2 million short of that. One thing that, actually, I'd like to ask my deputy director, Cliff Finley, to comment on our current capital program and how that actually validates the asset management planning that we did as part of this, part of this process.
Hi, Mr. Finley.
Thank you. I just want to, want to say that the five-year capital improvement program, which was actually established in advance of the asset management plan, showed that we would spend about $3 million a year on our capital improvements. Now, that program includes recoding tanks. It's really maintenance and repair of our long-term assets. The asset management plan actually took a 50-year look at that, as we discussed in November, and confirmed that that's about the right number per year to be spending. So actually, that was, that was good news. We were on the right track, and we're continuing to do the maintenance that's required.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Finley. And back in the mid-'90s, there was a proposition, a citizens' proposition that was an initiative, I should say, that was passed, Prop 218. I don't know if anybody remembers that or not, but as I understand Prop 218, it means that a public agency, such as ourselves, such as the city of Thousand Oaks, that wants to purvey water to its citizens, can only recoup cost. We, by law, can't make a profit selling you water, unlike the private agencies that also service the city. We can only, only recoup our costs. Did I have that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Just wanted to get that out there. All right. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Price? Yes, sir?
Yep. We're talking here tonight about both water and wastewater, and I know that a lot of times we're spent just on the water aspect, but the same is true of the wastewater system. times we're spent just on the water aspect, but the same is true of the wastewater system here in the city. We have aging infrastructure and the increases there are, that are being sought are in an effort to fund maintenance and operations and to also infrastructure, maintain our infrastructure. Is that, is that right?
That's also correct. Our wastewater system, our wastewater enterprise, we've been drawing down on reserves for a number of years in order, in order to meet our capital needs. And so now that we have a, we have this financial plan in place, we have the targets for various fund reserves, including operating fund, an emergency fund, and then a capital fund, similar to water, in order to have enough money to continue to maintain similarly about the $3 million per year level, to maintain or replace, rehabilitate, in that case, about $800 million of assets, so that we, we don't end up having to increase so significantly in the future. And in, in the case of the wastewater system, many of, many of the efforts that we can do are, are not very drastic. In other words, we don't have to go in and tear up and replace pipeline because we get it before it's so deteriorated. We do a lot of lining projects in the wastewater system, both on our maintenance access holes and as well as our pipelines.
Very good. Well, let's go to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitnick, our city manager had a comment too.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the council, when we come to you every year with the budget and then as necessary with recommended adjustments to rates for utilities such as water, which we don't do every year, been almost a decade on the wastewater side, it's always a challenge. Nobody likes to see their rates go up for anything. At the same time, though, it's important to remember the importance of maintaining a well-run and balanced operation and have, have utilities that have maintained their integrity. And we have the financial plan. City Council has approved financial and budget managerial and other sorts of policies over the years, and we stick to them. These policies are based on best management practices from throughout the United States. And it really is critical that we make sure we have sufficient revenues to cover the recurring, recurring revenues cover recurring expenses. You've heard me say that over and over and over, over the years. It's essential. If we don't do that, then we're on a slippery slope and then we go downhill and it becomes almost impossible to recover. Yes, there are municipalities and private companies, not really private companies, but there are municipalities that will have lower rates, but that's, as we've heard earlier, that's only a matter of time. Those rates will catch up. And those municipalities that have lower rates, they are not adhering to the best management practices that we've talked to you about over the years. They do have a deteriorating infrastructure and deferred maintenance is not something we would recommend to you. It just, you know, that commercial from years ago, pay me now or pay me later. So it's a, we don't want to go down that path. We are going down that path with our general infrastructure in the city as a result of some other hits to our general operations, but for the utilities, we really should not go there. And it is important to maintain reserves. The front page of the Ventura County Star today had a kind of lengthy article for the state of California and stressed the importance of putting more money aside for the state's general fund reserves. The bond ratings are very important, too. The rating analysts do look at how we manage our utilities, and for us to retain the AAA rating, we need to go down the path that we're recommending. I can't stress how important that is. So you heard an outstanding presentation this evening from your Public Works Director, and we appreciate the General Manager from Cuyahoga coming down. That was very informative. Any other questions throughout this process, staff is available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. So we're going to go to public comments now, but before we do, if anyone has any remaining written protests, would you please present them to our city clerk? I have eight speaker cards, and we're going to start with Ginger Palowski, followed by Ken Free, and David Snow. Please state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
This is it. Good evening to the President, the Met President, the Mayor Protam, and members of the council and citizens of Thousand Oaks. The purpose of my coming here tonight was that I feel that yearly increases in all public utilities is something that affects so many people and the cost just, it makes it almost, makes it most difficult for people to live. The cost of living keeps going up. And if everybody that worked in every field felt that they need to get an increase in their, in their job, it would just domino, everything just dominoes, and then you have inflation. There is no end to where it could go. There's always problems with infrastructures of things that, of different parts that, that could make things work. But somehow I feel that the rate increases are being put into effect for other reasons rather than just to do the infrastructure repairs. I'm, I'm sure that it is difficult for many middle-class families to manage right now because of the present rate of inflation. And the cost of living in this area is higher than the cost of living in many other areas in the United States. And the utilities that we utilize, like the water and gas and electric, are vital to everybody's existence. And to increase these rates yearly can cause hardships on many families. And I strongly feel that the rate of rates we have now are high. And I see personally, I mean, I heard everything everyone had to say here just now, but to keep raising them all the time, it would just make it, you know, even more difficult to manage living in this community. And that is really how I feel of it. And I also wonder what the bonuses would be for the executives of the committee that runs the water supply here. The three top executives, do they get large bonuses? I mean, does that have anything to do with the raises of the cost of the water? These are just questions that I have, because I feel also, I mean, everybody wants, you know, every, wants to have, oh, it's four minutes. Is that what the yellow button means?
Yep.
Oh, I have one more minute. Okay. Okay. I just feel that everything, wherever I go, whatever I look at, I see that the cost of living is going up so high that, and it doesn't seem to matter. Most people don't say anything about it. They may complain, but they don't complain to the right people. And the reason why I am here today is to voice my opinion and the opinion of many other people that I know that live in this area, that everything is just going up too high. And there has to be a point where you just kind of like level it off, just for a while. Because if you keep doing it at a regular rate, it gets out of hand. And that's just the way I see it. And also, I never received any questionnaire in the mail for me to express my opinion on, and neither has anybody else that I know. So we didn't get that.
Thank you, Ms. Palowski.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Ken Free, followed by David Snow and Nancy Healy. Hi, Mr. Free.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Water rates have-
State your name and city of residence.
Ken Free. I'm one of the water warriors in Thousand Oaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Water rates have gone up 45% since 2009, and now the city is asking for a further 15.6% increase for roughly a compounded 68% increase since 2009. Last year, the city took in $5.4 million more in cash than it dispersed in its water fund. That's 5.4 million more cash in the pocket last year. That fund now has 4.0 million in emergency reserves, 5.2 million in operating reserves, and 14.6 million in unrestricted funds. This means that the city has $23.8 million in cash or short-term investments it can rely on before it needs additional revenues in its water funds. In fact, that $23.8 million represents virtually an entire year of revenues for the water utility. And now you're asking for more. Let me ask whether it is game-playing to advertise that you are asking for water increases over two years when the two increases would occur 10 months apart? Let me ask whether it is fair disclosure to market the increase as being caused by wholesale water increases when water is essentially free at the source and the increases are caused by operating conservation and capital improvements? These are all decisions about which the city, Cuyahoga, the MWD, and the state of California ultimately control. Let me ask whether it is asking as not, acting as an honest broker to advertise that the water increases will cost residential users only $6 more per month, when the true cost of the two increases will range from almost nothing to $100, depending upon the time of year and the neighborhood you live in? Let me ask whether it is reasonable to allow your water consultant to assume cost and expense inflation of 3% when the Federal Reserve, Reserve's estimate for inflation is barely half that, 1.57%? A change based upon this alone would reduce the 15.6% increase by 2.9% to 12.7%? Let me ask whether it is good business practice to approve speculative capital improvements which affect current water rates before studies have been completed which prove their viability, such as the Camarillo Desalter project, or based upon projects which simply may not be needed, such as the Wilder Reservoir Number Two? Beware, a $24 million bond issue has been forecast for 2016 to pay for these projects. Let me ask whether it makes common sense to request a water bond of $24 million when the water fund already has $23.8 million in liquid assets available to it? Councilmen and women, I suggest that you delay this increase, that you go back to staff or committee with the mandate to hold the line. Based upon the current financial condition of the water fund, there's certainly no need to increase rates in the short term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Free, and Mr. David Snow.
Yeah, David Snow, residence of Thousand Oaks since 1989. That was a hard act to follow. I mean, I just, I think I'm going to come here tonight and just lighten things up a little bit. Do I want a rate? Hell, no, I don't. Who does? I don't think there's a person in the council. Oh, and I meant to say first, congratulations, Protam Al Adams. And Joel, I wanted to thank you. You had been in office two hours. I think I called you about the herbicide being sprayed by the City of Thousand Oaks on certain weeds around the City of Thousand Oaks. And I do appreciate, Joel, and probably being in office two hours, got a meeting together with Kevin Wilson out there, and, and I really appreciate that, because without your help, that would have never taken place. So again, water, I'm kind of on the conservation side of it. I think we waste water from the time we get up in the morning, from the time we go to bed at night. It'd be nice if we were kind of the Thousand Oaks city that could really get behind some more active water programs than just BYSwater.com. Because we're all tired of getting hit over the head about water conservation, but we do waste a lot of water. I just really look at it and try to sum it up in three things. This is about education, conservation, and preservation. Okay? I'm standing up here talking to you tonight, not for me, it's for my kids, it's for my grandchildren. You know, you guys are going to be long gone, and some of you guys are going to be long gone, too. And guess what? They're going to be standing up, talking to the council about how come the water rates are, are so high. So I agree, too. I don't think you should raise the rates. I think they're fine. I just think we still, as a group, as a county, as a city, we need to enact, and here's one incentive. I don't know if you're going to go for it, but you, you should make an incentive on the water bills, like you've done other things, beautification awards or things like that, but you should make an incentive for people that are using innovative ways of saving water and give them an award, maybe three or four awards, of six months or a year's free water. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine what people would do to save water? And I'm not asking everyone to take a military shower, okay? But people waste water on one thing mainly in their landscape, and that's the grass. And it's the lawn. And we are every day eliminating more lawn, hate to say it. There's always going to be enough lawn in our area for Little Jimmy to throw the baseball and kick the soccer ball. But I guarantee you, we put a beautiful monument sign up here at the gateway into coming into Thousand Oaks, what's it next to? Five acres of Marathon 1, 2, and 3. I'm talking the Baxter Building. I think we should put incentives out there, even the Civic Arts Plaza. City of Camarillo is starting to do that, to use more California natives. We have a town, a city, that's named after a California native, the oak tree. So with that said, I just think if we did that, and I know it takes a lot of working together with cities and staff to come up with, but I think there could be a better incentive program than just basically asking everybody on a month and month. The reason we don't get those programs, Jay, is because most people, when they're looking at the tier, the billing, they don't understand the tier program. All they understand is they're usually have tears in their eyes when they get the water bill. So anyway, I still think we should keep our water rates just the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Nancy Healy, followed by Nick Kidway and Richard Furco.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, staff, residents. My name is Nancy Healy. I have lived in the City of Thousand Oaks since 1988. I've lived a lot of places, and this is the best place I've ever lived, and I want to continue living here. Thousand Oaks has a very large already and growing senior population. This is one of the things that makes it a very special place. And while a water rate increase will affect every resident, it can have a much more devastating effect on a senior with a limited fixed income. If you know that your income has no possibility of going up, when you get an extra added expense that is going to come every month, you have got to make some very difficult decisions about what you want to give up in order to continue to pay that water bill. It's also very easy to say, oh, you can cut out that watering on your lawn. I know this happened, I think it was two times ago, a senior resident who had lived in a home for a very long time had been very proud of keeping her lawn in her house the way it was, and she had to make that very difficult choice to let her yard brown out. Granted, this was not world-shaking, but it was very devastating to her. I'm really here tonight just personally, I think the city is run very well, I've been very happy here, to just bring it to a more personal level, that there are some residents here who will be extremely affected by having to have a monthly increase. And just to ask your consideration that when you are looking at what decision will be made, to seriously consider how it affects everyone and to also seriously work on making certain that all cost-cutting methods and good management techniques are being used at every level in this very complicated process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Nick Kidway, followed by Richard- Nick Kidway, followed by Richard Furco and Larry Carrigan.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of Concerned Citizens, Thousand Oaks. Honorable mayor, council, the only hope that we have to really attack this properly is to go to the grand jury. Those people who have written letters already, you already have, all you have to do is copy them and mail them or fax them. The notice that was sent is defective. It says adjustment. It really should say rate increase. I mean, English is not my mother tongue, but I mean, you need to hit the nail on the head, and it was not done. It was interesting to hear the PR from the young lady here, from the company. But the city is, if you read the letters, two postcards were sent to a lot of people. I mean, you have money to just throw away, that's why you're sending two postcards. In fact, the letters are not on the web. I probably am the only one here that read, there's 49 letters now of protest. And in fact, the notice did not say that if 50% of the people, it's very simple, if 50% of the people vote against this, it would not be approved. But it's not in the postcard, and that's why you really need to go to the grand jury. You've all heard about New Jersey and the traffic jam thing? This is, just like the New Jersey thing, this is how much ink I had to print for three pages. I mean, this is the way they're making the letters print. I mean, this is done on purpose to make people feel that they cannot do anything because you cannot fight City Hall. This is not about conservation, my friend. This is about greed, pure and simple. If TOTV can show some of the overheads, that's the two-city budgets. They are over $200 million in the two budgets. And here, people are not even able to take a bath properly now in a greatest city in the country. And we just find out that the gentleman did such a great, brilliant piece of work, that's $23 million in the water fund? I mean, this city has given, you know, $2 million to renovate the Cavalier Theater. Not the theater, in fact, just the lobby of the theater, $2 million, just in the last six months. We are spending half a million dollars subsidizing the theater every year. And then, you know, my friend Caruso has the lakes for a dollar a year, and the disabled Americans cannot even get disabled parking there. I ask, why not help these people who have worked all their lives, have some kind of a means test, who have these big yards, give them some money so that they can take care of these huge bills which were not expected? I mean, you read the letters, the 49 letters, it makes you cry. I mean, these are the best and the brightest, and they are made to suffer like they were street urchins or something like that. This is what the city gave me. This is a report on the Caruso Project. They redacted. I mean, I hear that some people who have been fired from NSA, they are going to get jobs at the city at a 50% increase in salary. Well, this man did all right, $618,000. This was the director of this agency that is raising the rates. You can only skin the cat so much, Mr. Mayor. The people cannot bear this. You have to attack it in another way. You need to send a notice and get information about how they are spending the money and the money that they're spending on retirement and other things. And I again encourage the citizens to take advantage of the grand jury system, it is still active right now, and complain because, like I said, there's too many things have been done which are wrong, and they can make a difference. In fact, these postcards should be sent again because they don't say that 50%. That's one of the reasons the response is so poor, that all it takes is 50%. I mean, we should run a campaign, get the former mayors together, and defeat this. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Richard Furco, followed by Larry Carrigan and Kathleen Doran. Evening, Mr. Furco.
Good evening, thank you. Hello, everyone, I'm Richard Furco. I've lived in Thousand Oaks since 1985. Much of what I would have liked to have said has already been said, so rather than repeat that, I'm someone who lives in the Caneo Oaks area, which have larger parcels of land. And while I know this isn't about the TEAR, and I think it is TEAR, program, but my wife and I live in the house. Our son has moved out. The rate increases, we cannot do anything to conserve any further than what we have. There's two people we shower, we cut down on water in our lawns. Everyone wants Thousand Oaks to look beautiful, but let your lawns die. The increases in the structures that the city needs to maintain, how is it that I need to pay a higher percentage for the service of water to my land than the person who's in Tier One? Why am I paying more for that? Because if everybody was Tier One, you would still need to pay the same money for the same structures to carry the water. But instead, I'm paying a 7.5% increase, or they're asking, for a much larger percent or piece of what it's costing to maintain these structures. That just isn't right. It just can't work for us to just continue to pay, pay, pay. Since 2007 or '09, when all this nonsense started up, it has gone up to just a ridiculous amount of money. So we shut our water off. We let our lawn die. But guess what? We're still paying hundreds of dollars a month, or every two months, when we get our bill for water. And while I don't think those who are Tier One should be paying increased rate either, I don't think that's fair. But I don't think it's fair that those people who, you know, if you're driving a large car that burns a lot of gas, your punishment is you have to refill your car more often. But you're paying the same amount of money for your gas as the person that drives the car that gets 40 miles a gallon. That's fair. Why is it that someone who uses more water because they have a larger property or they have more family members? They have 10 people in the household that take showers. They're going to use more water. Why are they being forced for those extra showers to pay more money for them? It makes no sense. It has no logic to it. It should be a rate charge per unit of use irrespective of how much you're using. And again, I don't think anyone should be paying any increase. I don't think they've justified any reason to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furco. Larry Carrigan, followed by Kathleen Doran and Clint Makovich. Hi, Mr. Carrigan.
Good evening. Larry Carrigan, City of Thousand Oaks for 45 years. I'm here tonight to protest and object to the water rate fee increase being proposed here tonight. The proposed rate increase has a disproportionate and excessive impact on large residential lot users, owners, rather. Last year's fee increase added approximately $85 per month to my monthly water bill for an average monthly increase of 35%. That was for 2013. The new proposed rates will add another approximately $85 per month for 2014 and another $85 for 2015. These increases add up to about 105% over a period of three years for my property. This is outrageous, and there has to be a better method of analysis and assessment prior to approving and enacting these exorbitant rate increases. The city's rate tier system is imp punitive in the way it charges large lot residences. My lot is just over an acre, and you have to just hear what this impact does on my property, and I can only imagine what these new proposed rates will have on even larger properties. I believe we have an inequity in the tier rate system that penalizes usage. It doesn't matter whether you have a 1,200-square-foot house on a 5,000-foot lot, or a 4,000-foot house on a one-acre lot, or whether you have 12 people in a home or one person in a home. These things really don't get into any kind of accreditation or analysis in these tier systems. They're based on a small-rate user. And it's not fair, as some of the previous speakers talked about, how this is enacted. We have cut our system down as much as we can. We've, to the point where we have brown areas, but that's what we have to do to try to conserve. And these rate increases are, after we've always adjusted our times, in the wintertime we cut times down, we do all we can. Of course, here lately, we've not had any rain, so we've not had any ability to cut back water usage at all in the landscape areas. City ordinances mandated landscaping, and only in recent years, those drought-tolerant planting and irrigation systems encouraged and allowed. Those of us who have planted prior to these new landscape irrigation regulations are heavily penalized. We are not wasting water by merely maintaining our previously mandated landscaping. We now can't afford to replace our entire landscaping and irrigation system, and we're left with inflated and unconscionable water bills now and forevermore. It's been my experience, the more money there is in any kind of budget or reserve, it gets spent because it's there. I recognize the dire position we are in in California, we find ourselves when it comes to water resources. I think it's imperative that cities, on behalf of their citizens, also challenge water purveyors and how their rates are calculated and not accept them without proper analysis and documentation. There's a lot of things we've seen about, a lot of these reserves for retirements and excessive things, and I really believe that may be a small piece, but every bit affects our rates. I would like to suggest that these rates not be adopted tonight and that the rates, tier system, and calculations thereof be completely reviewed and analyzed again. Perhaps it would be appropriate to have a citizens committee participate in this review, and I would make myself available to be on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrigan. Kathleen Doran, followed by Clint Makovich and Chuck Consel. Hi, Kathleen.
Hello, good evening. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, have been for over 20 years. And I'm here tonight basically reprising a role that I had several years ago when we had the last round of rate increases. I am here in recognition of the fact that the rates will probably go through and that everything is sort of, we're going through the process, but things are going to happen because they're going to happen. But I remember that my government teacher taught me in high school that if you don't step up and say something, you sort of forfeit your right to complain. So in order to preserve my right to complain, I am here tonight to tell you that in my neighborhood, it was interesting, when I was here before, I was talking about how I killed off the grass in my parkway strip because the water rates were going up. I've now driven through my neighborhood, and it's increasing beyond 20% the number of yards that are being allowed to go fallow. There's a difference between a yard that's taken down, where you bring it down to bare dirt in advance of doing something new. There's the other yards, which are just, they've stopped watering. The yards are going brown, it's sort of patchy, it's not looking good. It's making the neighborhood look pretty bad rather derelict. It's not the premier city that we present ourselves to be. It is absolutely affecting people in terms of what's available. I know that the woman from CaliGus had said that there are rebates and other things that are available on the website in order to help people make accommodations. I checked it out. Yeah, you can get a new toilet. They'll give you $50 towards it. There is nothing as far as turf replacement goes for the city. There is nothing as far as any incentive or anything made available to the residents to help them make that transition when they did invest in their landscape and are now basically stuck with what was required before. There's nothing, there's no mechanism to help them make that transition. I know even Upland had a program available where you could convert your landscape, and they had different college groups available connecting with the residents, especially the senior residents, to help them come up with a plan that would look attractive, maintain the integrity of the city, and tie in with the construction or the architecture of their home, and present something that was attractive more than just the leftover, you know, red lava rock from the old Taco Bell fire pit. There's a lot of things that can be done, and I do recognize that we all do need to conserve. But there has got to be a way that the city can partner with the residents, especially those that are adversely affected by that very punitive tier rate system. And it is punitive. One gentleman gave the analogy of fuel for the cars. That is reasonable. There's enough punishment in having the larger property and needing to maintain it without adding on that whip to make people try and conserve. People are doing everything that they can. I know for us, the biggest part of our water goes to our yard, and we are, again, looking at ways to kill it off. Half the front lawn is now gone. Granted, I've done the takedown, but I am joining a lot of my neighbors in removing that element from my landscape. Hopefully, it'll work out. But for my neighbor next to me who's in her 80s and has no means to accommodate any additional expenses, well, there's going to go another lawn. And as that lawn goes down, there goes the neighborhood, there goes the property values, and that wonderful premier green city is taken down with it. So at the very least, consider taking some of that 23-whatever-million dollars and look at a way to help come up with an alternative. And just having the drought-tolerant plants over by the library, they look neat for some people, they look interesting, but they aren't as easy to maintain as a lot of people would imply. I am an avid gardener, both for arid landscape and the full roses, so I know what it is I'm speaking of. In order to come up with something that's going to look attractive and stay attractive during the course of the year, it's going to take training, it's going to take resources, it's going to take making things available to your residents. So if you are going to go forward with this rate increase, please create a committee. I'll be happy to participate, and I know other people will as well, to try and come up with a way that we can make resources, some of those resources, available back to the residents so that we can preserve what our community is known for, being an attractive premier city. Because what I see when I drive down the street is yard after yard of bare dirt, and it's not premier. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Clint Makovich, followed by Chuck Consel.
I'm going to lift their glasses up here. Been here a while. Clint Makovich, 32-year-old, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks, members of the council, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, representatives from the Water Department. I didn't plan to speak, so bear with me as I fumble along my speech here. As I said, I was born and raised here, and the previous speaker used the term premier city. I personally garden with indigenous plants and enjoy them very much. And I think that if we applaud our open space system as much as we have for the last 50 years, I think that the city, in an effort to set a precedent, set an example, as far as water conservation is conserved, we need to use these indigenous plants more in our city's landscaping, our shopping centers, and I think that we would still be able to hold our premier city status. I wanted to ask, I don't know if it was mentioned before, but I was curious if somebody could tell me here tonight, as we go along here, just for the public's benefit, how much the city spends on water a year exactly, if there's a exact figure that people know. And getting back to the indigenous plants, I ran for the park board in 2012, and one of my points for my platform was for the park district to use indigenous plants. And I am curious if there's any cost put on the taxpayer as we continue to use non-native vegetation that requires watering day and night. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makovich. Chuck Consel. Chuck Consel?
Hi. I think you're a longtime resident, 45 years, I think, maybe more. Wow. Anyhow, I want to thank all you people, and we need to get organized on this. I don't know what these guys are going to come up with, but we need to get organized. These rates have to stop going up. And thank you, the attorney fellow here, right here with a glass. Okay, you're not an attorney, but okay, that was cool. You got it all down. And always thank you, Nick, who's up in front on all this stuff, and that's cool. Let me just say this, we got a crisis. We got a water crisis that we're confronted because we overbuilt Southern California. That's what it's all about. We got too many houses and not enough water. It's going to get worse. So who's going to pay for it? All of us? I don't know. I think the whole thing needs to be researched and investigated. And I wanted to say one thing, just an anecdotal thing. I'm not up on all this stuff, but I was up to Lake Piru not too long ago, and I was stunned. I haven't been up there in a long time. I was stunned. It was almost empty. And I asked the guy at the gate, I said, "What happened? Where's all the water? What happened to this? This is always full, or, you know? It's all going to irrigation. It's all going to the avocado trees and the strawberries." Now, we all like avocados and strawberries, but what's the mix here? Are we going to, you know, is it going to be? I know Al likes vegetables and trees and stuff, but, you know, where are we going to make the cuts? We're going to have to make cuts. So I think the whole thing, I think you need to defer this. I think, you know, the whole state, the community, we need to look at this in a kind of a special way because, you know, you see the weather out there. We ain't getting any rain, and that's not the first time it's happened. So let me just wind it up. But yeah, about the Piru thing. So, and about lawns? Yeah, I, you know, we converted to pebbles about 10 years ago, and we've got one of the prettiest yards, thanks to my wife, in the city. So I just want to say, we got to organize, and that's the only way we stop these guys from taking control. It's all about us people, and that's the only way we do it. And thank you, and thank you for really being cool. I saw the thing on the tube about Miller Ranch. I thought that was neat, but I remember North Ranch when it was wide-open spaces and Jim Arnett riding around on horses. It was beautiful, I got to tell you. So thank you very much for the job you're doing, and maybe you'll vote the right way, and we'll defer this and really get into it and look at it and investigate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. I also have one written statement card that is opposed to tonight's rate increases. All righty. Mr. Spurgeon, do you have any comments or responses to our public comments?
Yes, I do.
All right. Thank you.
And I also ask some of the other staff to comment on some of the issues, but I'll start. A number of concerns raised during, by the speakers, of course, and kind of trying to, we'll try to cover the, sort of, the common themes. There's some easy, I think there's a few things that are easily answered. Staff does not receive bonuses for, as part of our compensation. That was asked. Last year, we spent about $14 million purchasing water. It's out of about a $21 million budget. So that's the kind of, the answer to that question in terms of the magnitude of that line item in our budget. There are, one speaker pointed out, there's a few fairly large-scale capital projects that are in the CIP budget now. The Camarada Desalter was one. There's a new water tank that's planned. Those are outside of our two-year budgeting window in terms of the programming schedule for those. And absolutely, we will be revisiting those projects as we go forward. Those are currently not part of the increase here. Should either of those larger-scale projects go forward, one of the options is to use bond financing, debt financing. Currently, the Water Enterprise has zero debt. We have never borrowed money to maintain, or build, or expand, or rehabilitate our water infrastructure. It may be that's the proper way to fund those kind of projects should they go forward. That spreads costs over a much longer period of time, so there wouldn't have to be as large increases to cover those. Several of the speakers talked about disproportionate costs for higher water use, whether it's on a larger lot, or for a greater level of landscaping on properties, and that the tiers are just not fair. As part of this proposal, we are not recommending any change in the rate structure, in terms of the tier structure. You may recall that a couple of years ago, there was a significant effort in reviewing our rate structure. And in fact, we took about, almost a year with a Citizens Committee looking at the tier structure. Ultimately, council decided to revise the pre-existing rate structure and flatten it, and in a sense, take the tiers and make them much closer together. And in fact, we are, City of Thousand Oaks has the flattest tiered structure of any agency, certainly around us, in the county. There are, for instance, Cal-Am Water, again, that's my water purveyor, they have much, much more aggressive tiers. And our tiers are about 7% apart, theirs are 25%, 30% apart. And in fact, they have a fourth tier, which somehow the Public Utility Commission allowed. That is almost $9 per unit. That's double our top tier right now. Anyway, we're not talking about Cal-Am, but in perspective, and I understand that the more water you use, you pay a higher rate because you're in our upper tier. But they are fairly flat. Whether or not that is something you want to pursue further, obviously, that's your prerogative. But we're not recommending any changes as part of this rate adjustment process here. The notices that were sent out, I am confident meet the requirements of the state law of Prop 218, in terms of what information is included in them and what's conveyed to our residents and our ratepayers. One resident said she didn't receive them, and obviously, that's unfortunate. I, we can't answer that directly. Other than to say, in compliance with Prop 218, state law, we had to provide a separate notice to all of our wastewater customers, and all of our water customers. A total of about 54,000 notices were sent out. I'm going to ask maybe our finance director and then our consultant to comment or respond to a couple of comments. One had to do with the level of fund balance in the Water Enterprise Fund currently, and how, and why that money can't be used discretionally for paying bills, or doing operating, or doing capital costs and whatnot. And the other one, and maybe our consultant can talk about that, and that's the assumptions for inflation that were included in the financial model, and why those were used, and really what impact those have overall on the proposed rate adjustments. So Finance Director Adams, maybe you can go first, and then our consultant, Sanjay Ghar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Mayor Protam Adam and city council members, just want to make a few comments. I do want to talk briefly about operating expenses. In comparing 2013 to 2012, things operating O&amp;M, operations and maintenance, was actually less, and I'll use salary and benefits as an example, was actually less in 2013 than 2012. I think that's important because when you look at the increase in expenditures in 2012 to 2013, the total was 1.3 million. 1.5 of that was in water purchases. So when we talk about where the rates are being increased, we are focusing on the purchasing of water and then the capital component. And this goes back into the reserves and capital, building capital reserves. As stated, the city does have cash within the Water Fund, but with that said, council has adopted very, has adopted reserve policies, and part of that was in the plan, and we do this for all operations, whether it is the Wastewater Fund, the Water Fund, the General Fund. The Water Fund has actually three reserves. One is an emergency reserve, one is an operating reserve, and the third is a capital reserve. Anything left is really for capital. I want to focus on that because when we look at how much money is currently invested on our balance sheet in capital, we're talking less than $50 million. But what we are saying is, is there's $500 million of infrastructure that we have to maintain and replace, and I think that's really a focus. When we talk, taking away the purchase of water, we're really focusing on capital. That's the other 3% in the increase, is building and maintaining the infrastructure. And that is costly, no question. If we can not, if we do not charge that, the infrastructure will deteriorate over time, and we will be paying for it in the long run. I guess I would like to compare this to other enterprise funds, and maybe I'll even talk about the Theaters Enterprise Fund. Council, several years ago, we had some challenges in our theater fund. Direction was, let's draw down fund balance and use reserves, and we delayed making very tough decisions. We're going through a process now to make those tough decisions. We do not want to be in that type of situation with any of the utilities, which are larger operations and have a lot more infrastructure and assets to have to maintain. So talking about reserves and the recommendations to increase rates, and specifically related to the capital, I think it's critical that we do that now. We do not delay funding future capital needs. So I think I'm going to turn that over to Sanjay to make his comments on the inflation.
Thank you. Thank you. As Jay mentioned, there's two components associated with the operating budget. There's water purchase costs, and then there's others, the cost associated with operating the system. With the water purchase costs, as Jay mentioned, it's $14 million. We did look at that, and we projected out the future costs associated with that. Basically, that's going to be increasing around 5.6% or 5.5% each year, based on our estimates as of the time of the study. The other aspect, the smaller component, which is the $7 million, that composes different things, such as labor, benefits, energy. What we use is, we use basically industry standards associated with inflation factors. This is based on our knowledge of the industry and based on specific factors associated with, such as electricity costs. That has been going up more than CPI. Healthcare costs, that's another example. So we look at those different components and use that. That's basically, on average, is going up around 3%.
Other residents talked about the amount of water that's needed to maintain landscaping. We all get that. I mean, we all understand that. And whether or not some can afford to retrofit to more drought-tolerant and lower-water-use type landscaping, and then whether or not there's rebates available. And I think that's a, I think that's a great question, an important area that we can, we can help address our residents. To answer the question about rebates, I would like to ask Susan Mulligan perhaps to come back up and comment on that, because there are some programs available through our wholesale partners. And so, Susan, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, on the bewaterwise.com right now, there are rebates for not only the low-flow toilets, but high-efficiency clothes washers, weather-based irrigation controllers, and low-flow rotating sprinklers. So those, rebates for all of those are available to your residents by going on bewaterwise.com. Soon to come, any day now, will also be rebates for turf removal. So that's a new program. The Metropolitan Water District is starting, and that will be available any day on the bewaterwise.com website as well. And it is challenging to learn a new way of gardening, and one thing that Cali Vegas does twice a year is, at our office on Olson Road in Thousand Oaks, we have a native plant sale, and you don't have to come buy plants, but there are free classes given by people who do this for a living and install native gardens, and can help residents learn how to do those retrofits. So we advertise those in the Ventura County Star. If there's some advertising we could do on any city channels, we'd be happy to do that as well. It's right here in your city twice a year.
And I believe some of this information may be on our current website, but clearly, we need to get that information out, and so we'll be, we'll be looking at that to provide that information further. There may be other things. Obviously, there's considerable concern about increasing water rates, just like other utilities, as really all of the speakers have shared, and we all, we all experienced that too, of course. But having said that, I think we've probably covered most of the main concerns that were raised, and obviously, we can follow up at your pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Any questions for staff, Ms. Irwin? Oh, well, I'm sorry. Mr. Mitnick would like to comment, and we'll go to questions from council. All right?
Mayor Protam, members of the council to follow up on the staff comments. So we are in a situation where we have aging infrastructure. We don't have developers anymore paying for new infrastructure to be provided, whether it's water or wastewater lines and so on. So you heard a lot of comments today about the situation that we are in. The industry standard is to have, as you heard, more aggressive tiered, tiers, or tiered structure system. We have one of the least aggressive, and that was the outcome of the Citizens Committee that we had before. The residents that have smaller lots, which is the majority of the residents in Thousand Oaks, they pay more than they would if they were in another municipality, or if they were in a private system. So the smaller property owners are paying more for their lower tiers. We heard from a number of people who live in Caneo Oaks, and just as a reminder, the city fought very hard about a decade ago to annex Caneo Oaks into the city water system. Had Caneo Oaks stayed in Cal-Am, their rates would be significantly higher. They would be subject to the fourth tier that Cal-Am has, correct? So their rates would be higher, and the water flow would be weaker. So there's a little bit of history there to remember. Comments about conservation? We are a leader in terms of the conservation programs that we have. We also have a fairly active audit program, so if ratepayers would like to have the municipal employees come out and do an audit of their house or their business to identify ways to conserve more, or to look for leaks and that type of thing, we do have that program. It's a personalized service, and it works well. So you can call the city, look at our website. We also used to have, we heard concerns about low-income ratepayers. We were phasing out a program that we had that the redevelopment agency paid for for low-income seniors, the HAPS program, Housing Assistance Program. That is being phased out, so it's harder for the city as a municipality to provide programs. You did hear about the stuff that Cali Vegas has available. So I wanted to make those comments as a reminder to the council. Thank you.
Mr. Mitnick, any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Irwin?
A couple of months ago, we did the big infrastructure study, and wasn't the bottom line of that really that if you delay the infrastructure maintenance, that the costs go way up?
Well, the short answer is yes, and we've seen that so many other, in so many other, with so many other agencies. Let me give you an example. One of the smaller, one of the smallest cities in the county along the 126th quarter delayed for years and years, needed upgrades and maintenance on needed upgrades and, and maintenance on their wastewater system. And ultimately, and for many years, they had the lowest wastewater rates. They were paying, I mean, what was it, $12, $15 a month for many years. Those rates are now almost $100 per month. And that's, that's just a startling example of how, when you defer maintenance and improvements and rehabilitation of infrastructure, it will catch up to us, clearly.
And what happens if we don't approve the rate increase this evening?
Well, going forward, we'll be in a negative cash position with, in terms of the revenues that we, that we collect versus what we have to pay for imported water and other operating expenses. That only can last so long, notwithstanding that there's some fund reserves. We're out of money eventually. I mean, that's, that's the, the simple answer.
Okay. Because I, I really, it's really unfortunate what Mr. Mitnick mentioned, that there's no more helping, especially the senior citizens that are on a fixed income. I think we, I mean, this is a really horrible situation. We're in a desert, the price of water is going up, and yet you have people on fixed incomes that absolutely cannot afford these increases. And, and that additional state money was, that could have been used to help them, was taken away. Is, what, when is that program phasing out?
Mayor Protam, members of the council, that, we're going through the process right now with the Oversight Board in the state of California. The state wants that money. So we're trying to maintain it as long as possible.
All right. Okay, that's all I have.
Would the council consider comments from the... I'm sorry, but public comments have ended. Sorry. Perhaps Ms. Belvila Penney would want to address something here?
Thank you. I have, I have several questions, and then I would like to ask Mr. Free what he was concerned about. First of all, I'm going through some of these protest letters. And one letter says that they would perhaps go back to Cal-Am Water. Do the residents have an option to go back to Cal-Am Water?
No, they really don't at this time. And, and I would, I would point out, I think it was, it was stated earlier. Let me, let me bring, I'm going to bring up one of the slides. When we look at comparing the water costs, so here's, here's again all the combined water rates. These are the monthly, I'm sorry. This, this slide here. This is the, this is the first-year changes for varying water, water use levels. The high, the very high water user here, 74 units per month. That, if we use the current Cal-Am water rates, rather than $339 per month, that would be 434, based on using their, their current, current rate structure. And that's not even getting into Tier Four. Tier Four is, I believe, starts after about 100 HCF, although I think some, some users in the city, whether it's Caneo Oaks or other large, large lots, would, would fall into that fourth tier. So I think that...
The ship has sailed.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'm looking at the water rates, and I think California Water Service right now is the highest in our area, if you don't include Simi Valley. Higher by just a few cents. And they were proposing a 28% increase over two years, plus a 14% from MWD, which is a little over 40% increase in over two years. That's 40%. That is why staff and I drove down to Carson to protest. We have not heard yet how high the increase will be, but we were hoping for less than 42% over two years. And I completely understand the frustration of the residents, because I am frustrated, and I have to pay a whole lot more than what the city charges. So I am wondering, and I do blame Metropolitan Water District, and I see that the, one of the residents or protest letters includes the City of San Diego having sued the Metropolitan Water District. And I think the case went to court in December. I'm not sure if staff is familiar with that. And if so, is that something the city could consider doing?
I'm not, myself, I'm not familiar with that case. Perhaps Susan Mulligan can, can provide some background on that. And whether or not the city would want to sue in a similar manner is maybe, maybe another discussion. But Susan, what, what do you know about that case?
The essence of the case between San Diego and Metropolitan is, San Diego contracted with Imperial Irrigation District to buy water directly from them. And they wanted, they wanted to wheel the water through Metropolitan's water system. Metropolitan calculated a wheeling cost which San Diego feels is too high. So they're suing Metropolitan over that wheeling cost. Should San Diego win that lawsuit, more cost shifts over to us. So it's really a question of what's an appropriate wheeling cost. And that's, that's the essence. There are other things, but that's the main reason they sued Metropolitan.
Why is Metropolitan raising its rates? Why are they so high? And they're, they're the reason why everybody else is paying more money?
They are. And their rates are high because, over the last 10 years, the, the main reason their rates are high is that over the last 10 years, they put money into putting ozone at all their treatment plants, a lot of capital, and putting, building Diamond Valley Lake and building a big pipe called the inland feeder to move state water project to Diamond Valley Lake when that water's available. And so the first was a regulatory compliance issue for water quality regulations, the ozone. And the second was, because we have all these other demands on the supplies, we can't just get them year to year. We need to find a way to store water so that we can get through the years when there isn't enough. As more people move into the state, and as those water supplies go towards environmental purposes, we're just that much closer to a drought every single year. So they've had to invest in money to keep us from going into shortages.
And you went into detail during your presentation, but I'm glad that, that you are clarifying it. Thank you.
That's the main reason. There are others, but that's the big cost.
Okay. Thank you. Comments were made regarding rebates or grants to assist seniors on fixed income. This is a question for, for staff. But do you also offer rebates, Ms. Mulligan, for low-flow toilets or low-flush toilets?
We do. Those are on bewaterwise.com.
Okay. I didn't hear the toilets. I heard the other items. And how far back, how, is it retroactive if you purchased something a year ago or two? Or does it have to happen within a certain amount of time?
You are at a level of detail that's beyond my pay grade.
All right.
We have people who can answer that question, but it isn't me.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering whether the City of Thousand Oaks, in making our decision here tonight, whether we could research such programs with, we do have money in reserve, which I know we want to protect, but I, I was just wondering whether that is something we should actually consider, seriously consider?
There are opportunities to apply to Metropolitan for special conservation programs proposed by agencies like Thousand Oaks. And that's certainly something that we can work with the city on to propose a program like that tailored to Thousand Oaks. So I think that's something we can work with you on to look into.
And council member, were you asking about a rebate program or low-income assistance or both?
Both.
Okay. Yeah, clearly, we can work closely with Cigus on, on a rebate program, making sure that we have that information out there. If you're, if you're wanting to use some of city funds to add to their rebate program, that is not in place at this time. And, and obviously, at this point, we're not including that in, in our recommendations for the water rate adjustments.
I mean, I don't know how many requests for a $50 rebate toward a low-flow toilet that the city would receive. We only have 16,000 customers, so I don't know how many would actually be able to buy a $300, $400 toilet that is 0.8 gallon flush.
And, you know, as time goes on, anybody who's buying a new toilet, whether it's retrofit, all new construction already have those low-flow fixtures in place. Probably the bigger area where this could be of benefit to our residents is, is landscape retrofitting and, and higher efficiency irrigation and whatnot. And, and those, those programs are already in place through Cigus and Met, or as Susan mentioned, soon to be in terms of turf removal and replacement. That's actually really exciting, because that has not been in place for some time. That's, that's a huge area where people can reduce their outdoor water, water usage, as, as many...
It is. I reduced mine by 50%. I have drought tolerant plants, and I tore out all the grass. But again, that is a cost to do landscaping like that. You have to invest a lot of money. And so, but that is definitely an alternative. But I have to say, I wish the city were my purveyor and not California Water Service, because I would save money. All right, that is my comment so far. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Price, do you have any?
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Free. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Free, why don't you come to the podium and explain to me exactly what your concern was?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. And I know this is perhaps a little bit out of order, the process, but I think this is a very important issue for us. And it's, you know, we're the citizens of the town, and, you know, we need you to listen to us and, you know, respond based on full and accurate information. And I don't pretend to be a water expert. The, the more I get into this, the more I find wheels within wheels and hidden issues and issues regarding legislative policy and technical issues and so on. But, so I find that I have to kind of back off every once in a while and kind of try to boil it down to fundamentals. But then, nobody else is throwing numbers out, so I have to show that there's $23.8 million in a pot for the water fund. And what, you know, that's, that's a real number. Now, and that, according to the city's financial statement, that's a, that's a liquid asset in cash and cash equivalents. It's a current asset, which means you can take it out of the bank and spend it. Now, there may be policy decisions, or there may be reasons why it is not conservative to spend that money. But the reality is, is the money's there. I do not know to what extent the city has issues or, or not with commingling of funds. I don't know whether that liquidity assists the city in its, in its day-to-day operations. I don't have the information to critique that. But by the city's own published statements, that is a real number. And that real number is substantial by any means, and certainly related to the water revenues. It represents, coincidentally, a full year's revenue. So that is something that we have to keep in mind. So what does that mean? I think that means that there's absolutely no reason why a decision has to be made tonight to increase the revenues. This decision, you know, could easily be put off by many months and have very little or perhaps no cash flow impacts to the city. That's, that's one thing I wanted to say. Is, on that particular issue, do you have any questions or comments?
Continue.
Up here at your request.
Yes, and you can continue.
Okay. Another issue is, is on the issue of, of inflation. Now, any analyst who runs numbers out into the future needs to make assumptions as to what inflation is. I do that in my business all the time. And historically, the 3% inflation number just seemed to be a number that everybody used for convenience. The problem with using a number for convenience today is that this is, has a real impact upon real people. This isn't just some financial pro forma. This is a number that, if we, if we use the Federal Reserve's number from November 25th, their most recent number for monetary inflation of the next 10 years is 1.57% per annum. About a point and a half. Our consultant, the city's consultant, used a 3.0% assumption for general inflation, 5.5% for, I believe it was health and welfare, I'm going off memory here, 5.5%, I believe, for the cost of water. And perhaps there was another 3% assumption for general operating expenses. But if we took those numbers and we assumed that that 3% base number is just simply not right, based on what the, our own best estimator of federal authorities can say, and if we reduce that number by 1.5%, and we're looking at a supposed two-year increase here, that's roughly, that's roughly a one point, roughly a three-point differential in what the city wants versus the city really needs. In other words, that 15.6% that it's asking for really could be something on the order of 12.6%. That's a 3% differential. To me, that's a big number.
Thank you, Mr. Free.
I've got a couple other comments if you'd like more.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Price, do you have something for us, please?
Yes, thank you. I'll direct this to Mr. Adams. I was interested in, in talking a little bit more about the reserve funds. And I don't know how, but I lost the number that you, that you brought up in each one of those funds.
Yeah. And, and referring to, as you know, the city produces what we call the CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. When we talk about financial documents, budget, CAFR, very transparent on the website, toks.org, go to finance under financial reports. The, the financial statements he's referring to are our annual financial reports, page 37. The city has, what we like to, we like to look at assets, liabilities, and equities. And when we talk about 23 million, first number, cash and investments, 23, 22.8 million. When we talk about reserves, the city has, and this goes back to the financial plans that the council has adopted, the city has been preparing financial plans, wastewater for, since 1998, water has been for, since 2006, I believe. We have, council has established reserve policies for the water fund, and it is in the financial statements on that same page. Emergency reserve for capital replacement is $4 million. Operating reserve, operating reserve is 5.2 million. It's based on a 90, is it 90 days, a 90-day operating reserve. And then the, the remainder, which is approximately 14.5 million, is what we consider the capital reserve. The discussion about what is financial prudent, drawing down on those reserves to pay for ongoing operational increases or costs would, would not be financially prudent. I would not be recommending that to you or the city council. And having consultants come in and doing the study, and let me just say this, I've been involved in several here. We're very, very sensitive on the reserves, making sure that they're reasonable, they're not excessive, that they do follow best practices. We do go through a very extensive process. We look at the budget. We try to maintain costs. When we really talk about this increase, it's really twofold. It's simply the increase in water costs or water sales, and then the capital. And I want to go back to the capital, because one of, one of the areas which isn't very clear on the financials is how much we have in infrastructure we have to maintain. And we have a half a billion dollars in water assets. And if you simply did 100-year amortization on that, that's $5 million a year. I mean, I think it's very important to understand that not just are you looking, looking at the operational costs, but you're really looking at maintaining the five, the half a billion dollars in assets. And that's really that additional 3% besides the increase in purchase of water. So hopefully I answered that question.
Yeah, I think it answers most of it. When you talk about the half a billion in water assets, does that include wastewater? Or is that simply water delivery?
No, that, that is just water. Your wastewater is about 800 million. You're looking at $1.3 billion between those two. And again, a lot of this, a lot of the assets have been donated by development, unfortunately. And at that point, they become the responsibility... And at that point, they become the responsibility of the agency that's managing or the assets of the, of the residents. And so I think part of it is the ongoing operations, part of it is ensuring that the infrastructure maintains at a certain level.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Adams, so we operate a water business, and it's a, over a $1 billion valued business, isn't it?
Half a billion, half a billion, 500--
Well, 1.3 with all the infrastructure and everything, right?
With water and wastewater, when you combine the two.
Water and wastewater combined.
So you are correct. We operate a municipal utility--
1.3 billion dollar business. Would it be prudent to operate that business without any reserves?
I don't believe so. I, I think that would be fiscally irresponsible by council not to have reserves.
Reserves, right.
Reserves. What those sets, what those levels are, it, you know, you look at how council has done it over the last decade, looking at what is reasonable. When we talk about operating an emergency reserve, the water plan, every time we look at, we look at the reserves. As Mr. Spurgeon had noted, in past years, we weren't at those target levels. And those, you know, and those have increased a little over time, but nothing excessive. I mean, there's always been the goal of having the emergency reserve and the operating reserve, so--
So this $23 million number I keep hearing is, in fact, our reserves. It's in reserves for an emergency that we may encounter in the city, correct?
And I would say, yes, and I think the main focus should really be on the capital component.
Right, I'm getting to that. It's also an operations reserve, which is prudent to have, and it's also our capital reserves for the projects that we have in the future pipeline. So this is not money laying fallow somewhere that we secreted away to pull from our ratepayers, is it? I mean, these are prudent reserves to operate a $1.3 billion water and wastewater system. Correct. All right. Thank you. Okay. Any more questions from council? Anybody? All right.
Yeah, I also had two questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kidway. We're past the public comment--
Could you allow somebody else? I just have a question, no speak.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kidway.
Okay, I'll go to the grand jury about this.
All right. We're going to have to close the public hearing at this point, but I do want to put out one last call for any written protests, because we're going to be tabulating these. And once the public hearing's closed, we can't accept any written protests. All right? So with that, I am going to close the public hearing if there's no further comments or questions from the council. And we will go to our city clerk, who will provide us with the results of the tabulation. Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed water rate adjustment was 16,358. The total number of valid protests received were 54, which includes seven protests received this evening pending verification. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for majority protest. 8,180 protests are required. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed wastewater rate adjustment was 37,726. The total number of valid protests received were 34, which includes two protests received this evening pending verification. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for majority protest. 18,864 protests were required.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. All right, we're at the point now where I'd like to ask my fellow council members for a discussion about this, or a motion. Ms. Bill LaPena.
I would like to throw out a suggestion that we indeed look further into some of the rebate programs, including Cigas, MWD, and the city, that will help with the, with home installation, fixtures, or, and with, with landscaping. That is something I think we really need to look into. With, my suggestion would be to wait until we have that information before we go over the rest of the wastewater rates. I mean, water rates and wastewater rates, excuse me. And I don't know how much time it would take, whether we could hear that before the, the end of, before we go into a summer session, or summer vacation.
All right, Mr. Price?
Well, I guess I'm not clear on what you're asking staff there. Is it that you're looking to defer a decision on this until we, until we hear about rebates?
We have, we have all the information, yes.
I, I don't know that, that that information is going to be what saves the day here, but, you know, I, I would say that, look, we're all impacted by some of these rates, if not all. I don't happen to be a, a customer of the city's water service, but I do enjoy their wastewater services, as do most of us in this city. This is a difficult decision. It is one that impacts some and not everyone, as I just said. But what I do know is that we have an obligation to those of you who are customers of the city water service to continue to provide a service. And I know also that if you went to your tap one morning and you turned the tap and water just trickled out, that you wouldn't be happy with this either. We're trying to protect against that, and we need to be able to afford to continue to service the infrastructure that you've heard so much about tonight. It is of critical importance that we continue to maintain those lines. They have been here for, I think, what I've heard is some of them for, well, 50 years, since the city's been in existence, probably some of that is even older. Lines that we assumed from the county, when the city incorporated. And I think to, to defer that maintenance would be penny wise and pound foolish. We see that, as was illustrated in the case of a nearby Ventura County city. We see that in the city of Los Angeles all the time, when they have water main ruptures. And once they patch that one, it causes a significant problem in another area, and then they have another rupture. Well, we don't want to do that. That then makes the, the project of repair even more expensive, because you're doing it on an emergency basis rather than maintaining it on an ongoing basis. So while this is difficult, I, I think it is something that we need to take a look at, deliberate on, and make a decision on this evening, and I'll, and I'll leave it at that right now.
Yes, Ms. Bill LaPena.
I just wanted to clarify that certainly I'm not suggesting deferring maintenance. We're just deferring the decision on increasing the, the water rates, but at the same time, we want to look at some sort of rebate program for the residents. And I do want to say that I, I mentioned earlier, I wish the city were my purveyor. I think we are in better hands, or you are in better hands, if the city indeed is your purveyor and not a private company, because every time I think about water, I think of the Bechtel Corporation, the multinational out of San Francisco, which took over the Bolivian water system and even charged the poor Bolivians the rainwater they were collecting. And it took, they had to take it to the international court in order for Bechtel to hand back the, the water system to Bolivia. It is, it is amazing what some corporations will do when it comes to water, amazing. And I'm not saying that every government is necessarily a very good steward, but I think that the city of Thousand Oaks is indeed. So the suggestion was to defer the decision, hopefully within the next two months, to come back with a program, a rebate program.
All right. Should we hear from Ms. Irwin?
Yeah, I, I'm actually going to go ahead and move the staff recommendation. We can't, if we put this decision off any longer, then, then there's going to be a big bump later on. I mean, then we have to pay, play, we have to play catch-up. And even though, I mean, the infrastructure issue is, is very, very important, the rest of it is a straight pass-through. I mean, we're getting charged, I hate to point to Susan, but she's charging us more for our water, and I, I don't think the fund can take that, that type of depletion. I mean, basically, Mr. Spurgeon told us that we're going to run out of money eventually if we, if we don't pay the, the cost going forward, so--
In one to two months, you're going to run out of money.
Please, please, please.
I'm having to shut up. I'm tired of listening to you people.
All right.
So--
But that's what I mean. One month, it ain't going to put us under. Two months is the gun--
Madam, please. You're at water, man.
And you, and I know it's kind of the opposite, and that's why I get in trouble all the time. People like you don't listen to people. Sit on your high horse up there and say things. You jaw-jack each other back and forth. Come on, I'm not going to take you out.
I'm not going to take you out. If we give you a timeout, it's called a timeout. And dismiss the council. If you're done, then that's fine.
You can't help us. I'll keep talking.
Again, as I said, if we, if we put this off, there's going to be a bump later on. I mean, that, there is, and, and the rebates are not necessarily, I mean, they are, as, as Mr. Price said, they're not going to be solving this problem either. I, what I'd really like to see is those rebates, especially for the lawn replacement put on the website, so, so as many of the, the, our water rate users can, can utilize those rebates. I mean, this is a horrible problem, especially for people that are in a fixed-income situation, but I, I don't see that we can defer maintenance, and I don't see that we, I mean, we have a pass-through now. We're, we're being charged more for water. So I, I don't see that we have any option with this. So that's my motion.
And, Mr. Price, you had something?
Well, what I wanted to point out was that these sorts of rebates do exist through Metropolitan Water. They're, they're out there now, they're available. I think what, what we're trying to do is expand them, see if there aren't more available. And, and, and I would say that, yeah, we certainly, staff needs to continue to look into that, and to the extent that we can, bring those to the residents of our city. And again, I, I don't think that, because they are available, and I don't think that this is going to, to be what causes us to reevaluate and be able to somehow reduce the, these increases. I don't see that deferring the vote on this is prudent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. All right. Well, let me say this, the wastewater fee has not been raised in 10 years, since 2004. The water rate has not been raised in two years. The city's basically eaten it for the last two years. This is, this is a taxpayer, when you talk about the city, it's not really the city. The city is the taxpayer. The city is all of you. And I know one thing, this is a taxpayer-funded entity, and we have to recover our costs. We can't run a water system and lose money doing it. Can't do it. If, if that was the case, I'd be the first one with my hand up, saying, let's get out of the water business. Let's privatize the thing, let someone else take it over, and then I can almost guarantee your rates would be considerably higher, because like Councilmember Bill LaPena, I'm in the California water system, and our, our rates are considerably higher than they would be for the city of Thousand Oaks. We have to recover our costs. That's the 4.5% that we get charged from Metropolitan Water and Cigas and all the middlemen, and we have to maintain the system. We have to. I can give you an example of where we didn't maintain the system, where we decided to defer costs. It happened about, I don't know, 15 years ago out of Hill Canyon. A pipe burst during a, during a big rainstorm flooded the, the whole area with sewage, and we were sued for millions because we decided not to maintain that system the way we should have. And I'm not going to put the taxpayer of this city into that kind of situation. We need a reliable source of water for all of you folks, and we can't, we have to avoid any kind of catastrophic situation that could occur, and believe me, they occur. They do occur. You read, you pick up the paper, you read about them all the time, and I'm not going to have that happen in this city. We have a $1.3 billion water system in this city, and it's owned by you. It's owned by all of us. It's a, it's a publicly-owned system. We have 600 miles of piping and pumps, and it's a hugely valuable asset that has to be maintained. At any given time, 11 to, about 10 to 15% of the system needs to be replaced. It's a constant, ongoing problem. You folks own homes, you know what these lines are like. They get filled with roots. There's all kinds of problems that occur. We have the same problem with our, with our system. So it's imperative that we maintain it, it's imperative that we keep delivering water on a reliable basis, and it's imperative that we avoid any kind of catastrophic event. You know, you can defer maintenance on the theater, for example. We're, we're in the theater business, too. Thank you. You can defer maintenance on the theater, and it's easy enough to say, well, you know what, let's not replace the seats for a couple of years. But those are seats in a theater. This is a whole different ballgame. This is, this is a system that's servicing 17,000 people in the water system and 38,000 people in the wastewater, in the wastewater system. You know, there's things you just can't defer without putting those folks at risk. So I, I would say that, I mean, I, I, you know, we've been, we've been looking at this now for quite some time, and I can't see any real point in deferring the decision any longer. However, I would ask Councilmember Bill LaPena, I think she has some excellent ideas, and could you please tell those to me again, that, what, what you're looking to, because what I'm thinking is, I don't see any reason, if it would seem favorable to you, that we couldn't add your thoughts to this motion.
Well, my, my concern is rebate. I've always looked for rebates. The city of Thousand Oaks does not offer rebates. It's, it's done through Cigas or the Metropolitan Water District, not the city of Thousand Oaks. And with senior, on fixed, seniors on fixed incomes or lower-income households, now that our redevelopment money is gone, I think it is imperative that we actually look at our own rebate program to enhance whatever is, is out there. That is what I was mentioning.
I wonder, would you be amenable to, Ms. Bill LaPena, to suggesting to Councilmember Irwin as a friendly amendment to her motion to, to add?
If she's willing to accept it. To, to come back with a rebate plan, a city rebate plan, that will enhance the other rebate plans that are out there for low-income households and seniors on fixed income.
She's, she seems willing to add that. You are willing to add that?
Yes.
All right. Well, let's see then. We have a motion on the floor to, to approve the staff recommendations, one and two, and there's been a friendly amendment to, added to it that would explore--
A rebate program.
A city, a city rebate plan, a city rebate plan to help seniors and our low-income population.
And to reward, you know, landscaping changes, as well as the installation of fixed, of fixtures, water fixtures, toilets, faucets, whatever it may be. But I think landscaping is what staff said is really what is important.
All right.
So exploring the option of that.
Exploring the options. Did we get all that? All right. Then we do have a motion on the floor, so at this point, I will call for a vote. Vote, please.
Excuse me. By exploring options, I actually wanted to make sure that staff comes back within two months to, with a plan that is, that is a viable plan, not just that we discussed it and say, good idea, but maybe not. I mean, I'd like to see that actually happening.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't make that a, you know, a part of our, one of our council meetings, as far as a staff report.
Would that be okay, Councilmember Irwin?
I mean, we would, we would have to discuss it further to see what the cost is, or, or, you know, obviously, we can't say right now we're definitely going to do it. I think we need to explore, look at what the costs are, and then discuss it at a council meeting.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Did we get all that? All right. Anybody else? Any more comments? Vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Fox absent, and two ordinance titles, one adjusting and setting rates and fees of the city water division, and the other adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of the city wastewater division.
Thank you.
Do we have a closed session? Do we have a closed session? Do we have a closed session? That thing?
We are now going to move on to department reports. And the first report is on our debt policy and the revision of said policy. Mr. Adams, you'll be giving that report, please.
Yeah. Let me just get started. Let me get set. Good evening, Mayor Protem Adam, council members. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief update on our revision to our debt policy. Up on the dais with me is Mr. Christopher Lynch, who is the city's disclosure counsel, and he's with the firm Jones Hall. I will do a few slides, and I will let him finish with a few slides. Okay. So just briefly, just to talk about our city debt program, just to give you some background, since incorporation, or over the last 50 years, the city has issued 48 total bond issues. Currently, there are 10 that are outstanding as of fiscal year ending 2013. The outstanding principal that we are currently, have on our balance sheet is $115 million. Just for some points, the city has had a debt policy for nearly 10 years. Any debt policy is the foundation or the basis for a well-managed debt program. And just to talk about best practices, we do, professional associations specifically, like the Government Officers Association, recommends a debt policy. Just to talk about our review of our debt policy, staff has reviewed the existing policy and including our current practices. We refer to best practices, those that are issued by the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of Treasurers. And on top of reviewing the debt policy, we also looked at the trends in the municipal market. So quickly, you know, the basis, or the foundation of the policy is unchanged. I think we look at the policy in issuing debt. It's to minimize costs. We do try to do pay-as-you-go. The water fund is a good example, is pay-as-you-go as far as capital funding. We do look at fixed rates, fixed-rate bond issues, and prior to issuing any debt, we look at all funding options. So just briefly, changes in the municipal market. Really, there's two areas of concern. One is the post issuance compliance, where there's an increased scrutiny or an increased awareness of bond covenants and accurate disclosure. And then the second one is just accurate disclosure. Disclosure refers to the facts investors rely on when they're investing with city bonds. This responsibility starts at the point of issuance and lasts throughout the life of the bond. Although the city has had disclosure policies, or procedures, I should say, these procedures have now been included in the revised policy. As far as disclosure compliance, one of the changes in this policy is that there is a committee of key staff, key staff from city attorney's office, city manager's office, finance, and key department heads. And this, you know, just from a, one, a change in the policy as far as key staff. We also have formalized training, which occurred today, so the committee actually met this afternoon and did have some training. And so I'm going to turn it over to Chris Lynch, who's with Jones Hall, to sort of finalize this presentation.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, my name is Chris Lynch, and I work at the law firm at Jones Hall. We've been lucky enough to work with the city for approximately 30 years as bond attorneys. I personally specialize in disclosure practices and have been working with the city in that capacity. Mr. Adams asked me to come in the context of the debt policy to explain how the federal securities laws apply to the city when it issues bonds, specifically elected officials and members of staff, and what those elected officials and staff can do to ensure that they comply with federal securities laws. First, I'll give some very brief background about the laws and then discuss what is expected. There are two laws, the Securities Act of 1933 and the Securities Act of 1934. They were both adopted by Congress in the aftermath of the Great Depression, which saw widespread securities fraud at the expense of investors. The 1933 Act requires registration of all securities and prohibits fraud. Municipal bonds are exempt from registration. The most important law that applies to the city as an issuer of municipal bonds is the 34 Act. It did two important things. First, it created the Securities and Exchange Commission, or the SEC, which regulates municipal bonds. And secondly, it regulates fraud and prohibits fraud. Rule 10B5 was adopted by the Securities and Exchange Commission, and it requires disclosure documents prepared by an issuer of bonds to include all material facts and not to misstate any material facts. And a material fact is a defined term, and it means anything a reasonable investor would want to know about in making the decision to buy or sell the bonds. The second rule under the 34 Act that it's important for you to understand is Rule 15C212. It was adopted in 1989 after the first great post-Great Depression default by the Washington Public Power System. And at that time, Congress was concerned that investors were not getting the full picture when they bought bonds from municipal entities. So Rule 15C212 requires an issuer of bonds to prepare a disclosure document at the time it issues the bonds. The disclosure document, which is called an official statement, is prepared by city staff with the assistance of professionals. It's approved by the city council and authorized for distribution, and it must include all material facts, specifically the terms of the bonds and financial information and operating data that investors would want to know about in making the decision to buy the bonds. On the slide, you can see a picture of an official statement's cover. In 1994, the Securities and Exchange Commission amended Rule 15C212 to require annual disclosure by issuers of municipal bonds. The amendments require issuers to annually update the financial and operating data that was in the official statement and to provide timely notice of certain significant events, such as payment defaults and bond rating changes. The continuing disclosure filings are posted on a website hosted by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, or MSRB, and is free to all investors. That's the background on the federal securities laws. I don't want you to think it's an academic discussion. Actually, it's just the opposite, and that's why staff asked me to come talk today. In 2010, the SEC received additional enforcement powers under the Dodd-Frank Act, and it is currently expanding the size of its enforcement staff. In 2012, the SEC issued a wide-ranging report on municipal disclosure and listed some recent enforcement actions that it thought were worth issuers being aware of. And I just thought I'd briefly mention some of those here. Orange County, California, where the county failed to tell investors about its risky investment policies. In Arizona, the county failed to disclose known material declines in its financial condition and its operating cash flow. The City of Syracuse, New York, the city falsely claimed a surplus in its general and debt service funds. It materially overstated its ending fund balances, and it described as audited financials its unaudited financial statements. In the City of Miami, Florida, the city failed to disclose cash flow shortages that the city, and the city attempted to hide those shortages by using bond proceeds to pay operating expenses. The Massachusetts Turnpike Authority failed to disclose substantial cost overruns on its Big Dig project, which endangered that project. City of San Diego failed to disclose its looming pension fund crisis, and the state of New Jersey was found to have failed to disclose its underfunded public pension funds, and apparently it created the illusion that they were fully funded. So with that background, I'm here to tell you what the SEC says municipal issuers should do to comply with federal securities laws. The requirements have been clearly listed in position papers by the SEC given to Congress and in speeches, one of which is excerpted here. First, the city should adopt written disclosure policies and procedures. In each of the most recent enforcement actions that the SEC brought against a municipal issuer, it required the issuer to adopt written policies and procedures. Your debt policy now includes policies and procedures that are consistent with best practices. And your debt policy does a good job of describing the variety of documents that might be considered a disclosure document. It could be the official statement at the time of the issuance of bonds. It can be a continued disclosure annual report, but it can also be something like your website, if that's considered to be speaking to investors. And on this point, your website has been updated recently to include a disclaimer that information on the website should not be relied upon by investors, and investors should go to the MSRB's website to see information that the city has posted there, which is a very good practice. Second, issuers should provide appropriate training to their officials and employees that are involved in the issuance of bonds. Again, that's consistent with best practices, and that's what we're doing here tonight, and it's what we did with city staff earlier today, giving you the information you need to know to comply with federal securities laws. Third, in the context of preparing a disclosure document, local agencies should focus on big-picture issues. Is there unfunded pensions? Is there significant litigation? And should disclose the bad facts with the good facts. It can be a temptation to turn your official statement into a marketing document, to try and get better ratings, to try and get lower interest rates, but it's very important that you include bad facts as well as good facts. For many issuers, the big picture and the bad facts may consist of pension and OPEB information today, these days, but it also could be litigation. It could be a dispute with the State Department of Finance over redevelopment issues that could impact your general fund. It could be the impending departure of a large employer and important taxpayer. It could be deferred public infrastructure work, or it could be a structural imbalance in your general fund budget. Finally, the SEC thinks that local agencies should hire auditors and other consultants suited for the tasks they're asked to perform, and encourages local agencies not to focus on things like political connections, local persons, or going with the lowest bid. Finally, in conclusion, I thought I would anticipate one question that you may have. As a member of the city council, are you supposed to read each of the city's disclosure documents word-for-word before it's distributed? The SEC has stated, most specifically in the context of the Orange County enforcement actions, that if you are part of the chain of responsibility for a disclosure document, whether as a senior staff member or a member of the city council when it approves an official statement or other disclosure document, then you need to make sure that the disclosure includes any material facts about which you're aware that might impact the city's ability to pay debt service on its bonds. So you don't have to read it word-for-word, but you should ask questions of city staff, or you should ask the city's disclosure council, ask if the facts that you're most concerned about are included in the disclosure document. I hope this brief summary has been informative. I believe the city will be well-served by its disclosure policies and procedures that are embedded in the new debt policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
And just to make some final comments. So tonight, the recommendation is adopt a resolution approving the debt policy. I do hope that you understand that part of the presentation was the training that is provided to council to talk about your responsibility. Thank you for indulging us on it. I think it's, you know, just from a best practice, what you as the elected officials should be managing as far as the organization, that is an important part of our overall, you know, financial policies. And I think I'll just end it with that comment. So we're here, available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Questions for staff? All right. Very good. I'll just make a quick comment. I know that in the municipal bond business, the push for disclosure and transparency grows greater and greater every day, and I'm sure that's what this disclosure review group is about, not just for the initial issuance of the bond, but continued disclosure as they trade in the secondary market as well. So I'm sure that's why we're doing this, we're being mandated to do it.
That is correct. I mean, I think for you to understand, when we bring an official statement, that is the full document disclosure. And council, as a standard practice, approves, when they adopt a resolution to issue debt, they are also approving the official statement. Back in 2010, and even with Jan's Marketplace, which was 2012, I think, early 2012, it did come to council for approval. That is prepared by your hired professionals, whether it's staff or bond council, disclosure council. But one of the other responsibilities is the annual disclosure for the sale of those bonds on the secondary market. So these are the requirements for having outstanding debt, municipal debt. So yes, this is the purpose.
I noticed, too, it says periodic training for council members is required? Was that just our training just now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if something significantly changed in the policy, and that's what the resolution says, that we'll bring back a, if there's something that changes in the policy that's significant, we'll bring back the policy and then provide the training. If we happen to have new council members in the future when we're doing debt, if it's out five years, we will do the training prior to issuing debt. So for a new council member, this is the training.
Thank you very much. Very good. If there's no further questions, did you have a question, Councilmember Bill de la Penya?
Just wanted to make sure, the debt policy revision has nothing to do with the RDA debt that cities incur, or that we incur?
No, but the debt policy does govern the oversight by the successor agency, which is the city, for the redevelopment debt. So we have debt for the wastewater fund, we have debt for other capital facilities, and we have redevelopment debt. So the policy does cover the debt that we manage for the successor agency. So same thing.
I am remiss. We do have a public speaker card. I apologize. Mr. Nick Kidway, please.
No need, no apologies, because it's still in time. Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. I should be a grouch, because I have to skip dinner. No, it's 10 o'clock. I could be worse, but there was an officer standing there, so I will remain on my best behavior, because I want to go home and not to another place.[1551.65][1551.65](laughter) From my understanding, was that by definition, cities are not allowed to have debt, but there's all these back holes, back doors, and back channels. And a little bit of an explanation on that would be helpful for the taxpayers, so that they don't get, jump up from their seats and get upset. Because by definition, you are not allowed to. That's why other instruments have been created, and I am disappointed that the list of bad apples does not show Thousand Oaks. You should really add into it. And the reason is, and it's public knowledge, maybe the out-of-towners don't know it, is that the city's redevelopment agency that was dissolved, the state challenged about $35 to $40 million, I don't know exact numbers, it's not important, but $35 or $40 million, they said, did not have contracts. No contracts. Where's the money gone? And the city manager is a great salesman. He and his staff went there, had meet and confer with the auditors, and was able to finagle $12 million back, but we still lost $20 million of funds. And the school district, in particular, lost $11 million on a project. So please, in your next slides, add City of Thousand Oaks. In fact, this hall that we are sitting on, I love the new finance director, even though I still did not get an answer, because there's a fiduciary responsibility that the treasurer and city manager, finance director jobs should not be combined. But the former finance director who helped build this thing was a juggler. That's what we called him, because to build this, water funds, sewage funds, road funds, you name it, they were transferred to build this. And it took about 10 years, and the city, to its credit, paid them off. And in fact, the redevelopment debt is, why is there no report to show what all the debt is for the city, when you have this report? I would appreciate, I mean, if you, two of you claim to be taxpayers' friends, to provide a report as to what is the city's debt, what are all the debts? I know the redevelopment agency has left us with $200 million, which is $600 per family of four, and it will take 30 years. And what have we got for it? This theater that bleeds money, and you spend the general funds on it, but you will not spend a dime to help people with their water bills. And you did not answer my questions. I'm going to the DA and the grand jury. It's really ridiculous to treat citizens with disrespect.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right. If there's no further discussion, may I ask for a motion on the debt policy revision? Mr. Price?
Be happy to move staff recommendation to adopt a resolution.
All right. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Fox absent.
All right. You know, we've been at it for quite some time now. We're going to take a five-minute or so break, and then we'll be back. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene our meeting. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna reconvene our meeting, and we have a couple of more department reports to go here. And the next one is the general plan amendment for allocation of commercial land use along the Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The applicant is the Sahagian Family Trust, and I believe Mr. Prescott will be presenting that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, members of the council. This is a request by the Sahagian Family Trust to allocate one-half acre of commercial acreage within the city's overall commercial acreage capacity under Measure E to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and specifically to a half acre of land located as depicted in the maps in the staff report. The half acre of land is a, the rear portion of a property that fronts on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The total property is 1.6 acres, and the front 1.1 acres is already, does have the commercial designation under the general plan. When the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan was adopted, there was not sufficient commercial acreage capacity in the city's general plan capacity to accommodate all of the properties, so certain sub-areas were defined. There were six of them. They totaled 21 and a half acres that could not be developed with commercial uses unless further commercial acreage was allocated through the general plan amendment process. So the action tonight is to request to initiate that general plan amendment so the acreage can be allocated to that property. If the council agrees to initiate the amendment, it will go through the normal process, including environmental review, planning commission, public hearing and recommendation, and then back to city council for final action. Currently, there are about four and a half acres of unused commercial capacity under the general plan due to some amendments that have occurred since the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan was adopted, have actually reduced commercial acreage in other parts of the city. So there's ample land to allocate the half acre. Staff believes this item, this request, has merit and recommends city council adopt the resolution to initiate the general plan amendment as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Do we have questions for staff? Ms. Bill de Penha.
Mr. Prescott, good evening. Is this one of how many remnant parcels still that may need a little bit of housekeeping?
Well, um, as I mentioned, there's a total of 21 and a half acres in six different sub-areas within the Boulevard specific plan, and they can be developed for any land use permitted by the specific plan other than commercial uses because the city did not have sufficient commercial acreage without going above the Measure E capacity limit at the time. So some of those properties are probably never gonna need to be designated commercial, one of them being the, um, the, I think Renaissance at Grand Oak Senior Project that fronts on the Boulevard, goes through Las Felas, the Oak Creek Senior Villas Housing Project. But others, I think we will, at some point in time, get similar requests to this. The rear portion of the Carlson Property, for example, is in one of those sub-areas. The other land between the subject property and around the subject property back to Las Felas Drive, other than the Mobile Home Park, is in one of the sub-areas. So I think, yeah, our, our belief is that the council should just react to individual requests as they come along. In this particular case, Mr. The Sahagians wish to develop the property or lease it for development as a commercial development, and they would need that commercial designation for the rear half. Otherwise, the property would be split into two parts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So if I got this right, it's what they refer to as the rear portion of the Sahagian property, which is about a half an acre, that is actually on the Boulevard. And that's, that's the piece of the property that would like to have the commercial residential designation by giving up some acreage from our pot of acreage, correct?
Right. The property is 1.1 acres that fronts on the Boulevard. I'm sorry, 1.6 acres. The 1.1 acres closest to the Boulevard already has the commercial designation. The half acre at the back does not, and this request applies to that half acre.
Oh, okay. So this half acre is not the one, that's not on the Boulevard?
That's right.
That's off. Okay, got it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All righty. Well, then, if there aren't any further questions or discussions, would someone like to? Oh, no, I don't believe we do. No speaker, so open it up for a discussion and/or a motion. Councilmember Bill de Penha.
Yes, thank you. I move staff recommendation of this particular item, which is Land Use 2013-75458 initiation to a general plan amendment.
All right, thank you. Any discussion to that? All right. Can we have a vote, please?
Motion carries 4-0, Councilmember Fox absent.
And now we move on to 9D, which is a department report to also initiate a general plan amendment for the Caneo Coastal Properties Development at Clay Court. And John Prescott also has that report for us.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, members of the council. This is a request to initiate another general plan amendment to allocate some of the unused residential capacity of the general plan to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area. And that would allow, through a specific plan amendment, which could be filed if the GPA is initiated, allocation of sufficient residential density for a project, a proposed project of 35 dwelling units at, on Clay Court, just south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, comprising about 2.2 acres. And that's the Caneo Coastal Property. The, when the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan was adopted, similar to the situation with commercial acreage, there could only be an additional 214 dwelling units developed within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area, and still keep within the Measure E capacity limit that had been set for the general plan back in 1996. And that was divided into three segments along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, including of about 71 units in each segment, and then that was further divided. 50% of that had to be in a mixed-use configuration, fronting on the Boulevard, and the other 50% could be standalone residential. How the heck that happened, but--
I'm not calling you, John, I promise.
Yeah, thank you. Anyway, I apologize for that, little diversion at 10:30. I'm sorry. So anyway, in this particular sub-area, there were roughly 36 dwelling units available for standalone residential project. There has been one project approved that used four of those units, so that means 32 units available, 31 or 32. The applicant wishes to develop a 35-unit project, so they need more units to be allocated, at least into that sub-area. Separate, and then, and they filed the general plan and request to do that because the specific plan provided that as the vehicle for bringing additional units into the specific plan, a general plan amendment. Kind of separately, during the summer, the Thousand Oaks Business Improvement District, who worked closely with the city to develop the specific plan, sent in a letter request to the city council asking for an allocation of more units to the Boulevard specific plan. They felt, and the staff agreed with them, that additional residential development, to the extent that it could be provided within the Measure E limits, along the Boulevard was beneficial for trying to create the pedestrian-oriented environment and more of a 24-hour environment in the Boulevard specific plan. So we, you know, did meet with the Boulevard Association and talked with them about using this general plan amendment as a vehicle to consider a larger allocation, and they were very supportive of that. So in our staff report, you'll see that we're recommending, as a preliminary number, looking at maybe allocating about 200 units from the citywide general plan unused capacity to the Boulevard specific plan area. And there's about 400 unused dwelling units right now. So it's our recommendation, and the other element here is that the property owner or the developer who will be purchasing the property has requested that they be allowed to concurrently process the development permit, residential development permit for the project along with the general plan amendment. And such requests for concurrent processing require city council authorization, and we are supporting that. So it's our recommendation that the city council initiate the general plan amendment requested. The staff would study it and bring it to the planning commission first for a recommendation, and then back to city council and for final action. We would work closely with the Boulevard Association on what that, what that right number should be, but in the, on a preliminary basis at least, we feel about using half, half the unused capacity at this time would be reasonable. And if the council initiates the general plan amendment, then the applicant would be able to file the specific plan amendment, possibly in concert with the bid, to take those extra units. And are you gonna spread them out like the specific plan originally did, or do you wanna put more in one area and less in another area? That'll be something worked out through the amendment process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Do we have press questions? Councilmember Bill de Penha?
I'm not sure if, thank you. I'm not sure if I'm clear, Mr. Prescott, with tonight's recommendation is to approve the initiation, which is requesting 35 units for this particular parcel. But you're also asking that we approve an additional 170 units for a total of 200-plus to, to just get the ball rolling?
Right. The only, the only action the council's being asked to take tonight is to initiate a general plan amendment study. And as part of that general plan amendment study, the exact number of units would be pinned down, and that would be subject to then a planning commission hearing and a city council hearing.
You don't think we should just take it on a case-by-case basis, in case someone else in another part of the city would like to, to build something?
Um, no, we feel that, you know, from a planning standpoint, it is a, is a worthwhile priority to allocate units to the Boulevard, and we're not recommending that the city allocate the entire unused capacity, which is around 400 units right now, only half of that. And again, that's a preliminary number. That number might change as we go through the process, and at the end of the day, the city council will decide how many units when it comes back to you for public hearing. But, you know, if you look at the rest of the city, most of it's built out. We don't foresee very many, if any, real requests to increase densities under the general plan in other parts of the city. And I think the, the Business Improvement District, and I believe the, the property owners along the Boulevard are very interested in incorporating more residential into their projects--
Well, yeah. We know that. I was just wondering, this particular Clay Court proposal is surrounded by commercial properties, auto repair shops, et cetera. Who would want to build in the middle of, of auto repair shop section, 35 apartment units?
Well, the, there are auto repair shops on Taylor Court to the, which is, which is to the east of the, of the subject property. I believe the land further south, there's some office buildings and some vacant land or land with an old house on it that at some point's gonna be redeveloped. And to the west, I believe, is a, is a property now that's, I think, being used for storage of vehicles, but that's an interim use.
Is this going to, do you know if this is going to be low income or market rate?
I believe it'll be market rate.
By the freeway?
Well, this is a few hundred feet from the freeway.
Yeah, well--
Yeah. And the, the actual land use is permitted under the specific plan now, because that's the way the specific plan was written. It allowed either commercial or residential uses in these areas. It's, the issue of the general plan amendment is really whether the city would want to provide a vehicle to accommodate more than 31 units on the property.
Well--
And then the larger issue, as requested by the Boulevard Association, is to provide a, a bigger bank of residential units within the Boulevard specific plan for future projects.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and it does make sense, however, to put 35 units in the middle of what I consider not to be such an ideal area for residential living. I don't know who would want to live in those units if it's gonna be market rate.
A representative of the developer, City Ventures, is here tonight. I think he may have put in a card for questions only, so I think you may want to ask them those types--
Okay, then I'll ask--
Get their input on that subject.
All righty. Any other comments? Councilmember Bill de Penha, the gentleman here is Eric Evermart. Eric Evermart. And I believe he's right there. If you'd like, would you like to ask him?
Certainly. Thank you.
All right. Evening, Mr. Evermart.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. It is a late one, so again, I won't delay you very much, but--
The council member has a question for you.
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is Eric Evermart of City Investments, it's called? City Ventures?
City Ventures.
City Ventures, yes.
Yes.
My question is, the incorporating 35 residential units in an area that normally wouldn't lend itself to a enjoyable living environment, this is just my opinion, because I have all of the auto repair shops and, and other parking lots that are around it. Who would want to live there? Do you have some demographics in mind to who would be renting that?
Yes, we do. City Ventures, our business model is that we build in urban infill areas where we're able to bring improvement to the area and create livable communities. In this case, this is a very, this is an excellent area where you have the opportunity to live not only in Thousand Oaks, but to actually live in close proximity to the many retail establishments that are right there on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So it's, it does create a very favorable place to live, and we have no doubt that these units will sell.
Okay, so nobody will complain about the auto repair noise during the day because they might be working, right?
Um, one of the things that we also always do is in our, in our documents, our disclosure documents, we disclose everything. You know, everything that surrounds it, everything that could happen, everything that might happen, to the full extent. So our buyers are very, very knowledgeable as to where they're living and what could occur, what might occur when they live there.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
I don't know that my questions are for, for this gentleman, but so that I understand it, and I think I do, the action, by taking action on staff's recommendations tonight, what we would be doing is allowing staff or authorizing staff to do a study to determine the number of units that could potentially be moved to the Boulevard specific plan area, and at the same time granting the entitlement applications and concurrent processing, right? Is that, that's all we're doing?
Yes, exactly. You're authorizing the concurrent processing and us to study and come back with a recommended number.
And then the proposed development would go through all the channels, through, through your department and then through Planning Commission before it ever made it to us, to the council.
That's right. That's right.
All righty then. I will just say that I welcome this debate. The Clay Court project is certainly one issue, but the bigger issue, as Mr. Price said, is really how do we want to develop our city under the constraints of Measure E with the few units that we have left? Do we want to allocate them to the Boulevard? Is that where we want to put our development? Or do we want to spread it out? It's a debate that I welcome. I think it's something that we need to figure out. And that's exactly what this will allow us to do. So if there's no further discussion, oh, Ms. Irwin, I'm sorry, yes.
Actually, just looking at the picture, I'm kind of curious. Have you looked at all the, it looks like there's a lot of oak trees on that parcel. Are there going to be a lot of constraints to building that many units on that parcel?
There'll be some challenges, yes.
Okay, but I, and you know, my comment is also along the lines of what Mr. Adams has said. This is really, I think the council's goal is to start getting residential on the Boulevard, so this is a, it's a good first step.
Well, with that, if there's no further discussion, I would ask for a motion on this issue. Mr. Price?
I will go ahead and move staff's recommendations, both one and two, and look forward to hearing the future report.
All right. Vote, please.
Just wanted to say I will vote for it very cautiously.
Well, it is, at this point, nothing more than the intention to consider. Intention to consider. All right. Do we vote?
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Fox absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Okay. We are done most of our agenda tonight. I don't believe we have any committee, commissioner, or board reports, nothing from the successor agency. Are there any council members that want to talk about meetings or conferences they've attended? We're good on that? Okay. Mr. City Manager, would you like to follow up on some of the issues that we looked at tonight?
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, members of the council, no additional follow-up. We did hear at the beginning, though, a comment about the State of the City speech, and as a reminder, when the staff members pointed out to me, it is available online at the city's website, so if anybody ever would like to go watch it, they can retrieve it that way. The couple announcements, tomorrow, is it tomorrow? Yeah, it'll be tomorrow. At 1:00, we're going to celebrate the groundbreaking for one of the largest public transportation projects in many years here in Thousand Oaks. The 101-23 interchange project will commence tomorrow. So we'll have all five council members there, I believe, and our county supervisor and others. So the public is certainly welcome to attend that. And also, council, you've received some inquiries about another interchange, or close to another interchange, the Wendy 101 interchange, and some changes with traffic there and the ability to make a right turn coming out of the shopping center on Academy onto Wendy to go to the freeway over to, or the other part of Newbury Park. Residents can gain information on that on our website, too. I'd just like to let the council know and members of the public who are still watching that changes are being made to allow more frequent turns, and it's a complicated intersection, and some more changes are taking place. And in fact, some new turn lane will be taking place tomorrow. And so there's some information for the public on that. Just be patient with the city. Any questions, go to the website or call into the Public Works Department, and the staff there would be glad to answer your questions. The next city council meeting will be on January 28th. And at this point in time, the agenda's still shaping up, but we're hopeful that the Theaters Fund financial report will come to council at that time. Other than that, that concludes the city manager's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. And we do have a closed session. If you would announce that. Ms. Noonan?
Yes, we have one closed session. It's conference with real property negotiators, property APN number 667-0080105, located at Caneo Center Drive, Thousand Oaks. City negotiators include Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, and Christopher Norman, Assistant City Attorney, with negotiating parties Jonathan Friedman, buyer with Gem Street Properties Incorporated, and Joel Kirstenstein, buyer, agent, under negotiation price and terms of sale pursuant to government code section 54956.8. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report following the closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And we are going to adjourn this evening in memory of two very, pardon me, in memory of two very fine gentlemen. The first was Mr. Ray Clayton, former city attorney. Ray passed away just recently, December 27th of last year. In 1969, Ray became our first full-time city attorney. He was instrumental in formulating the city's oak tree ordinance. I like that. He gave his time to local charitable organizations such as Kiwanis, the Elks Club, Toastmasters, Rotary, and the Ventura County Bar Association. He retired from his law practice in 1998, and at that point, he took on pro bono cases. He liked to read, he liked to travel, he participated in the OSHA continuing education program at California State University. He was a fly fisherman, and he contributed to his church, the Westlake Community Christian Church. These were all passions of his. He survived by his children, his grandchildren, his nieces and his nephews. And Ray's son is here this evening, Ray Jr., if I may call you Ray Jr. And so on the behalf of our entire city council, we do express our condolences to you and your family and our deep gratitude for the service that your dad gave to our city. Thank you, Ray. And secondly, we're going to adjourn in the memory of our mayor emeritus, Alex Fiori. Alex passed away in 2002. It's hard to believe it was that long ago. We adjourn annually in memory of Alex because of the outstanding dedication, contributions that he's gave to the city. Many residents know Alex or recognize his name. After all, he was the guy that put the card table out at the Jan's Mall every weekend at the Char Broiler for probably 30 years and listened to all the constituents talk about their situations. What a guy. He was elected the first city council in 1964, served seven terms, retired after 30 consecutive years, five terms as a mayor, and that's why he earned the honor of Mayor Emeritus. Man of integrity, vision, and he truly was one of a kind. I had the pleasure of working with him towards the end of his life. He was quite a guy. Dedicated to his family, Katie, his wife, his children, Norm, Alay's, Tom, and Rick. They also, the whole Fiori family helped shape our community. And he'll always be an integral part in our city's history. And on behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, we'd like to express our appreciation to the Fiori family. Thank you very much. So with that, we will adjourn, and I thank you for tuning in.